All right, good evening, everyone. Let's call the meeting to order. Thank you all so much for joining. This is our Tuesday, July 19th, Louisville City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann, and I ask our city clerk if we could please have a roll call.
Recording in progress.
Mayor Stolzmann? Here. Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Fahy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Maloney? Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Most? Councilmember Lay? Thank you, everyone. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Could I please have a motion to approve the agenda? Could I please have? Thank you. There's a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second. Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The agenda is approved. That takes us to our public comment period for items that are not on our agenda tonight or items that only appear on our consent agenda. Are there any members of the public that would care to comment on a topic that's not on our agenda? We have one. Let me see. I'm not sure if you did a sign up card already or not. Well, I'll get it to the clerk after the meeting. Thank you very much. Please tell us your name and what town you live in, and then you'll have three minutes to tell us what you'd like to tell us.
Thank you. Cynthia Korn.
I don't think the mic's on.
Push. Where it says push. Cynthia Korn, Muscle White, 438 Jefferson Avenue, Louisville. I'm here tonight to say thank you for the South Boulder Road crossing. We were driving back today, and I remember six years ago, I think, being at a feedback session with the community in this room where Director Zakaro, it would have been Councilwoman Stolzmann at the time. Maxine was there. Councilwoman Most was there, too. I think a couple others were at this feedback session. So we had stickies going around the room about, you know, what safe routes to school looked like. And one of the gentlemen who lived south of South Boulder Road was really, pulled me aside and said, "I've been asking for a decade to get a safe crossing across South Boulder Road. It falls on deaf ears." And so, driving down today and seeing that safe crossing go in is really a beautiful thing. And thanks to this council and the prior council for taking it from feedback to actually getting it on a capital plan, working through supply chain issues, and getting a safe crossing for schools. We talk about that as a priority as a community. It's something that brings us together. I also wanted to thank you for the music, for sponsoring with DBA. It's been beautiful this year. You guys have been doing that since 2015. Now, a lot of people know that the city really supports street fair in partnership with the DBA now. So, thank you. So, and you all have been working so hard, especially this last six months. You have my thanks for pulling in tons of resources from across our nation. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to check in with Fire President Malansky. Did you want to talk on items not on the agenda, or did you want to talk on the agenda topic? Please, please.
Thank you much. My name's John Malansky. I'm president of the Louisville Fire Protection District Board. I came down tonight because I simply wanted to introduce myself to council and also to the citizenry. For those that don't know, the Louisville Fire Protection District is a special tax district that's separate from the city, although we work very closely with the city. And we had an election, unfortunately, right after Redtail Ridge. So that's why a lot of you got a second ballot in the mail directly after that, and I apologize for that confusion. In any case, for those that participated, that was our first mail-in election. I want to thank the citizens for that. We'll be having another election this coming May. We're two of the five members of the board, including myself, will be up for reelection. We'll try to publicize that a little bit better. But you'll be seeing the same mail-in ballot in May as well. So, I just wanted to introduce myself and also mention again that this is your fire department, and anytime somebody wants to come down to the firehouse, talk to us about an issue, bring your kids down, that's also what we're here for. We're part of the community. So, thank you very much.
President Malansky, do you want to let folks know when the board meetings are?
Board meetings, thank you, are the second Thursday of every month at 7:00 PM, held at Station 2, which is on Via Appia. A link to those, you can also call in on Zoom, is on the city calendar as well as the louisvillefire.com website.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other public comments on items that are not on our agenda tonight? All right. And for folks tuning in at home, you can raise your hand using the raise hand icon that you'll find at the bottom of your Zoom panel. And if you've dialed in by phone, you can dial *6, and we'll see a hand raised appear on our side on your behalf. And so, that is great for public comments on items not on the agenda. That takes us to our consent agenda. Any comments on the consent agenda from council members or motions? Mayor Pro Tem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion from council? Mayor Pro Tem Maloney, your hand is still up, so I just want to make sure you didn't want to make a comment.
It's just stuck.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. That takes us to our council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. Any council comments this evening? All right. Seeing none, that takes us to our city manager's report. City Manager Davis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Usually during this time, we give some updates on Marshall Fire Recovery. So this evening, that's going to be the main topic of discussion, so I won't share any updates there until momentarily. I did want to call your attention to two items that we have in the packet. We have the Q2 2022 Louisville Revitalization Commission Report to City Council. And then we have the Second Quarter 2022 Economic Vitality Strategic Plan Scorecard. Those are both available in the packet for your review. If anybody has any questions, Austin Brown, our Economic Vitality Specialist, would be able to answer any questions, or you can just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those reports. Anything from council? Thank you very much. Thank you, Austin, for the report. And that takes us to our first item of regular business, which is the Marshall Fire Recovery Updates. We have five topics that we'll be talking about through this. So staff is going to take us through updates on private property debris removal, rebuilding updates, use tax update, new resources, and one-year anniversary plans. We have many different agency partners from other outside of Louisville agencies that are here to give us updates, too. So, our city manager will introduce those as they come forward, and we'll have a staff presentation. Council members will ask questions during each staff presentation. So council members, you know, kind of keep track of your questions, and we'll ask them as we go. And once we get through the presentations and questions, we'll take public comment on this topic. And then we'll have council discussion based on the public feedback that we receive. So that is the plan. When we get to the public comment portion, please tell us your name and then what town you live in. And then each person will have three minutes to tell us what they'd like to tell us. All right. So with that, I'll turn it over to our interim manager, Davis, to introduce the topic. Oh, I apologize. Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that because of the extreme hardship that a lot of the residents are going through who lost homes, and the fact that I am one of those residents, a lot of my friends were impacted. And although I'm not required to recuse myself legally, according to our city attorney, I do want to avoid even the appearance of preferential treatment or anything. And so, I am going to recuse myself during the discussions and voting on the fire recovery.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahy. And so, when we have a recusal, then we ask the person to leave the room before we start any discussion, so it doesn't influence other council members. So we'll wait till you have a chance to relocate. All right. Thank you very much. Interim City Manager Davis?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Welcome, members of the public. This evening, we'll be discussing several updated dates related to the Marshall Fire. It's now been just over six months since the fire occurred in the city of Louisville, Town of Superior, and Boulder County. And there are several ongoing fire recovery efforts that we wanted to discuss with council and get community input on. Tonight, we'll be discussing private property debris removal, rebuilding updates from the planning department, city use tax and permit fees, recovery resource updates, and the one-year observance of the fire. I wanted to point out that we were planning to discuss the after-action report and our wildfire mitigation plans, but we're unable to, to do so due to pending litigation. These are very important issues on which the city would like to have community input. So, we will come back to council for public discussion around these matters when we feel we're able to do so. We have some outside speakers who are going to be introduced by staff and will be available to respond to city council questions. I also want to note that we have some staff who are available remotely. Sharon Nemeczek, Library and Museum Services Director, as well as Finance Director Kevin Watson. So they will also be available for questions during certain sections if needed as well. So, just to kind of introduce this discussion, I just wanted to talk a little bit about kind of just a quick overview of some of the things that we've done in the last six months. Although some programs and services have returned to normal in the city at large and also here in the city organization, we have maintained our focus on fire recovery over the past six months. There are far too many activities to share, but some of the key areas of recovery have been the restoration of the basic city infrastructure and delivery of core services, assisting residents with the rebuilding processes, working with FEMA, with various state agencies, local jurisdictions, on everything from homeowner recovery, community recovery, and city recovery, and participation and local management of the PPDR process, assistance with recovery resources and services, and targeted communication and engagement of residents directly fire-impacted and at large. Our recovery mission, or our recovery will remain ongoing, and these efforts will continue and have evolved over the last six months. Our recovery mission is to support residents and bring them home as quickly as possible. The city has worked hard to make this a reality and will continue to do so. We're going to start this evening by turning it over to Cameron Folks, our Assistant City Engineer, who will share an update on the private property debris removal. Get your teed up. You kind of have to scroll.
So you just scroll there? Okay. Thank you, Megan. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council. My name is Cameron Folks, and I'm the Assistant City Engineer in Public Works. I'm also the designated PPDR Coordinator for the city. So I'm the single point of contact for Louisville between Louisville and Boulder County, the contractor, and its subcontractors. This year's been a difficult one for residents, business owners, and city staff as we deal with the recovery from the Marshall Fire. I'm going to go through a private property debris removal update here briefly, and hopefully will show transformation from devastation into ready to rebuild. Here we have the first active property in Louisville that was part of the PPDR program on Larkspur. When the program started, we had definitely a bumpy road. There were several challenges. City staff worked with the crews to determine sequencing of events, how to cap utilities, and how to apply for demo permits. Several of the challenges that happened right after the program started were communication issues with property owners, scheduling the inspections was an issue. We had delayed results in soil testing, and then how to finally close out a lot and get it ready for rebuilding. So after a couple lawsuits delayed the project in March, middle of April, PPDR crews entered Louisville and Superior and Boulder County to begin the project. Early estimates from the staff to complete a project this big were somewhere in the range of nine months to 18 months. The contractor, DRC, committed to providing 30 debris removal crews in hopes to get the project complete by August 1st. Each week, the DRC brought in more crews and more crews, and then by May 23rd, they reached their final 30th crew arrived on site. As of July 8th, we had 21 debris removal crews on site, and their current anticipated demobilization is sometime the first part of August. Through the project, the landscape in Louisville has definitely changed. Here on the left, you'll see a before-and-after photo of the, one of the properties on Larkspur, and then a property on Mulberry on the right as DRC crews cleared the lot. The landscape has changed from damaged and destroyed homes to cleared lots that are ready for rebuilding. So as of July 8th, the program has completed 64 properties, and they're ready for rebuilding. They've also soil tested 196 properties. And there's been 261 properties in Louisville that have opted into the PPDR program. We do currently have one to two properties that have not applied for demo permits yet. The planning department is working with them, and they currently have a deadline of July 31st to apply for a demo permit. And currently, also, we do not have a deadline for all the properties to get removed, although planning and building is considering applying some kind of a deadline to get all the properties cleared. So here are some debris totals from the PPDR program. Again, as of July 8th, about 54,500 tons was removed, which equates to about 109 million pounds. That, all that debris was transported in about 4,4300 truckloads to the recycling facilities and landfill. In closing, I'm going to have a picture here of a photo I took just after the Fourth of July on Trail Ridge Drive, looking west. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Jeff Maxwell, who is the Public Works Director for Boulder County, to say a few words, and then we'll look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Jeff?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I am Jeff Maxwell, Director of Public Works for Boulder County, and I want to thank you for inviting me to this meeting tonight. Thank you, Cameron, for that overview presentation. I appreciate that. I wanted to add just a few more numbers about the countywide PPDR effort, just for some perspective. We had 568 properties opt in across the county. At this point in time, we have 496 properties that are substantially complete. So as Cameron alluded to in his presentation, the contractor is looking to wrap up substantial completion within the next two weeks, possibly three weeks, and be done with the vast majority of PPDR, at least debris removal efforts. There's still some ancillary work to be done after that, but the substantial completion should happen within the next couple of weeks. We know that there have been a lot of challenges throughout the entire program. We know that early on, the hydromulch program was severely delayed, that residents were experiencing delays of two to three weeks to get hydromulch on their property. We did what we could to communicate with the contractor and make him change his methods and means to try and turn that around. Recently, we've heard that there are concerns about the time it takes for soils testing. And so, I'll tell you what we've done to address that. Tetra Tech is the firm that does the soil testing, and it takes anywhere from five to eight days to do the full testing, develop the report, and submit it. We found that there was a lot of delay with the inspection phase. So to the credit of your staff, they worked with us at really streamlining the initial inspection phases and kind of making those minimal so we could get to the five-to-eight-day time period for soils testing. Hopefully, that's translated to a quicker turnaround for the residents, but we do recognize that was a hardship for everybody. Let's see. And then, of course, sometimes there are re-scrapes that have to take place, and the process starts over. Hopefully, those are few and far between, and not many residents are experiencing those, hopefully. I did want to talk a little bit about next steps. There have been questions about private property insurance and how that can be applied to ineligible structures. And our guidance at Boulder County is that you can take your own private property insurance. You can apply as much of it as you need to address your ineligible structures on your property, and whatever's left is what you would contribute to the PPDR effort. We are going to be hiring two or three insurance specialists in the next few weeks to help the residents and help guide them through this process. But I did want to let you know that if you're getting questions about that, they can use their private property insurance for ineligible properties first and then reimburse PPDR second. Lastly, one other thing we're going to need to address in the coming weeks is incidental damage. And in Louisville, I think a majority of that is around your roads, your curb and gutter. And we're looking at incidental damage as damage that was done in conjunction with the PPDR program, not something that the contractor did out of negligence, but it just happened to happen because running 30,000-ton trucks all over local roads constantly will degrade your roads. So we are working with your staff and working with FEMA to try and ensure we can get full reimbursement from FEMA for you to rebuild those roads that were damaged through incidental work associated with PPDR. We're pretty confident about that, but we're going to continue to work on that and give you updates when we have more information. Finally, I wanted to talk about just the overall value of the PPDR program. You know, we have quantifiable contracts and dollar amounts, but we don't have information yet about the countless hours that staff has spent on this. Anecdotally, my Public Works Department, 58 people have spent almost full-time on this particular issue since January until July. So Boulder County is going to quantify what all of the staff resources costs are, and we'll work with Louisville and Superior to do that as well. We want to be able to show the community the value of the PPDR program. We just don't have those numbers for you right now. That is a broad overview of where things stand, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from folks? Mayor Pro Tem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Cameron and Jeff. I have questions actually for both of you. But I really appreciate you coming to us and for writing all this information. The first question I have is, you know, I met with a lot of the homeowners in the Coal Creek Ranch area, which is in Ward 3, and a lot of them are asking about what is the expected timeframe to close the demo process, do the inspections, and so forth? Some of them reported that they're looking at months at this point in time, and I wanted to understand, what is the current timeframe in that? And what is a normal and customary for that?
Yeah, I might not have all the details around that specific neighborhood, because, like I said, we are looking at substantial closeout in the next two to three weeks with DRC. There may be some additional time delay if there are issues that come up around soil sampling, and that could extend it five to eight days, plus maybe a re-srape, another five to eight days. But I'm sorry, I think you said you were hearing something in the range of a month for closeout?
Months. I heard four months during the course of the meeting, yes.
Yeah, I am not sure. So if you want to, I'll give you my contact info. If you want to send me the specific addresses, I can tell you what's going on with them. But I, as I said, our contractor is looking for substantial completion in two to three weeks with some very small punch items remaining. It wouldn't be to close out lots over several months. So if we can connect and I can get those addresses, I can give you more detail.
All right. Thank you. My last question, because you answered another one during the course of answering that one. When you talk about road degrades because of the trucks, you know, I was over on Dillon Road last week, and, you know, I witnessed probably 50 loaded trucks coming and going from that neighborhood there in Dillon South. Are you saying that FEMA, or the county, or someone is going to consider those something that's affected by the fire that the city might be able to get reimbursed for? Because I believe that the degradation to the roads just because of the debris removal and then the subsequent construction will degrade roads much at a quicker rate than normal life.
Yeah, it's what we're referring to as incidental damage. And what we mean by that is it's damage that's caused not through negligence, but just as part of operating the PPDR program. So just to get in here and do PPDR, FEMA understands that we have to run extremely heavy trucks all day long on local roads that probably aren't designed to withstand that traffic. So what they're going to need from you, and we're already working with your staff on this, is they're going to need before-and-after condition proof. You're going to be able to have to show what the road condition was before PPDR and what it was after. And we can talk in more details about what that looks like. But once you show that before and after, FEMA is much more receptive to paying for the improvements. Again, this isn't a negligent contractor who was doing things outside of proper means and methods. This is just kind of the cost of doing business for a PPDR effort.
Yeah. Well, our Public Works Department does a, I think it's every four or five years, they actually do a PCI analysis on all the roads. So we do have that data from last fall or sometime in that timeframe. So thank you very much.
Just a bit of additional information on that topic. We've been meeting with FEMA pretty regularly on this topic, and it seems like they're really interested in the local roads in that information. And I think we're going to continue to have to present our case for the arterial roads. They've been less receptive on that topic, and so I think we just need to keep communicating that and the data and information. I think they're pretty receptive on the neighborhood streets. It's just the roads like Dillon and Via Appia and those larger roads that they are not, they've not yet subscribed, so we'll have to stay tuned on those.
Well, those, I mean, the four arterial roads for me are the two that you mentioned. There's Dillon, Via Appia, McCaslin, and South Boulder Road, which are all being impacted by this process. So, thank you very much. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And thank you so much for joining us this evening. I appreciate it. Sure. I've heard, even just as recently as this weekend, I've heard from constituents who were somewhat disappointed in the job that the contractor has done, thought that there was additional debris that didn't get removed, that should have been removed. What's the best way for constituents, residents of Louisville, to engage with the county when they have concerns about the job that the PPDR contractor may have done on their property?
Yeah, and the story that you're relaying is not, unfortunately, not unusual. So what we did was we, our operations manager brought in his own inspector, because he can control him a lot more than some of the state inspectors. So he brought in his own. And every time we get a call like that, his inspector personally goes out with DRC and shows them what they need to do. It's kind of like a punch list before we've completed construction. I spoke with my operations manager just before this meeting and asked, "Is there any outstanding?" And he said, "No, that everyone that comes into him, they go out personally. They bring out DRC, and they make them resolve it." Obviously, if DRC took something they weren't supposed to do, that's a much stickier situation. But if they haven't done something they were supposed to do, they stand with them in the field until it's completed. Again, if you're hearing from constituents that are not getting that level of service, reach out to me, and we will call them personally.
Thank you.
Councilmember Most?
Thank you. And I want to thank my fellow council members, Brown and Mayor Pro Tem Maloney, for asking some of my questions, so I don't have to ask them. And I'm very interested to hear, you know, as the mayor had commented, on what's going to happen with those arterial roads. That's been a big concern of mine from the get-go, because, again, I think the numbers, I was writing your numbers down. You said something like 4,300 truckloads. And I'm sure that we do not design our roads for an additional 4,300 truckloads in a matter of months. I just had two questions, and one of these questions is just probably me not quite understanding what you're talking about. You talked about ineligible, you said something about property, private property insurance that covered, that didn't cover or covered ineligible items. If you could just, you know, explain that a little better, I'd really appreciate it.
Sure. So if you have a property, your building is destroyed, that's covered by PPDR for FEMA, but you have an ineligible. but you have an elaborate swimming pool, and FEMA is not going to cover that swimming pool. We're saying it's okay for you to take your private insurance money, fix your pool, whatever that costs, come back to the county and say, here's all I have left, this is what I can give you for PPDR, and we'll take that.
Okay. So they get, the residents get to use that insurance money for anything that isn't covered by the county first, and there's no penalty to them for doing that? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Right.
And then, the other thing I wanted to ask your colleague, and I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Cameron Folks.
Cameron, that's it. I'm terrible with names. You know, you talked about those, the experience of doing that first property and some challenges with that, and I'm just wondering if you could elaborate a little bit on sort of the learnings from that to streamline future process? And also, any issues that came up that you guys are thinking about that are going to be really critical at scale, right? When we have hundreds, you know, dozens or hundreds of properties being built at the same time? If you could just comment on that.
Sure. Thanks, Councilmember Most. So, yeah, it was definitely a big learning process. You know, it took, I'll say, weeks to maybe a month, working with the county, working with their subcontractors and their contractors to kind of come up with a good process to go through the debris removal process. Hopefully, we don't have to go through debris removal process anymore, but we definitely learned a lot. Some of the challenges were, you know, scheduling inspections on a massive scale like that, you know, staffing, staffing issues that we had with trying to get those inspections done. And then, we are meeting, I think, weekly just to go through the rebuilding process and come up with trying to streamline that process. You know, we did, definitely did learn some things on mass scales with the debris removal, but then, you know, as rebuild permits come in, you know, we're probably going to go through a similar learning curve of, hey, you know, we're going to get 50 or 100 of these permits in at once, how are we going to kind of handle those? So there's going to be a little bit of learning curve, I think, just with the rebuild because they're a little different, but we're definitely working through those issues as staff, so.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you for the update on this so far. And just a reminder to everybody, we'll take public comment on the whole list of different topics, and so I know that can be challenging. If you need to make notes or anything, there are some agendas in the lobby and pencils if you want to keep track of the different topics. I completely understand, and so we're just asking questions as we go, but we will definitely take comment on all these topics. I just had a couple of follow-ups on the insurance discussion for ineligible items. Is that posted on the FAQ yet?
It is.
Okay, great. And then, if, I know that I've gotten a lot of questions and talked to a lot of people about that exact topic, and we've been consistently providing that information, but I think it might be worth doing some kind of an email blast to people to just make it clear.
Yeah, what we're planning to do is, I think I mentioned this earlier, we're going to be hiring a couple of insurance specialists to help guide the residents through this process. And so, once they're onboarded in the next week or two, we'll do a lot of community outreach with them so you know who to contact, what their background is, how they can help you. So it'll be robust at that time.
And then, I think there's some questions that I've fielded that are sort of a hybrid of the two. There are certainly ineligible items, but then there's some question about whether the eligible items were completed satisfactorily, like if the whole six inches was removed and things like that. So is it better for someone to just use a private contractor and address issues that are not satisfactory to their, if they have a combination of the two? Or should they work with you first to address what should have been taken care of?
I mean, I hate to tell them not to come back and have us correct something that should be corrected. So, I mean, the contractor is going to be here until the punch list is complete, so the sooner they can tell me, the sooner I can get it on the punch list. That would be my recommendation. Some people might feel it's faster to go private all the way, but if they didn't do it right, tell me, and I'll make them do it right.
And then, on the tracking spreadsheet you're using, can people follow up and see if their items are, if their items aren't listed there, does that mean you don't know about them?
Yeah, I don't have that level of detail to tell you today. My Public Information Officer maintains that, but I'll find out and get back to you on that.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much. And then, Cameron, I just have a quick question for you around the utility cap inspection issues. Do you feel like those have all been resolved?
Yes, so we've been working through probably the handful over in Cornerstone Subdivision that kind of, they initially failed and kind of fell through the cracks with the contractor, but over the last week or two, they've been addressing those. And I believe as of yesterday, there may be one or two left that just need to get closed out, but they've been working through and getting them knocked out.
Great. That's fantastic. Thank you. And we talked a little bit tonight about properties. There's just a couple of properties that remain that do not have a debris removal plan. And, you know, the debris removal presents a lot of challenges for the community because the people, you know, moving forward building are concerned around the health hazards, and the neighbors are concerned around the health hazards. And so, we're not trying to rush people that, you know, reasonably have delays and have issues with their insurance and things like that, but we also need to understand the timeline for getting all the debris out of the town. And so, with those handful of people that don't quite have a plan yet, do you feel like they'll have challenges meeting the deadlines you've set? And have you been able to get in contact individually with each one of those?
We have, Mayor. So we, at this point in time, we have one property owner who has made contact and has a plan with a private, or a private debris removal company. The permit hasn't come in yet, but I'll continually check with that property owner. And then, we had a property owner late last week who opted out of the county program kind of halfway through, and so that is presenting some unique challenges than to find a contractor to take over a project midway. But we are in contact with them and will continually work with them, and we have communicated a July 31 deadline. So we're down to two at this moment. And then, as far as getting lots cleared, so all the remainder of the lots have permits, and we are continually monitoring, you know, kind of progress to make sure that the crews are moving forward. Now that the PPDR deadline has passed, we'll turn more attention to making sure that those contractors are moving forward on a, at least on a consistent basis, that work doesn't begin to lag.
So I may have just missed, heard you. So it sounds like there's one property that we're pretty uncertain on.
There's one property right now. We are in contact with her. She's communicating with private contractors, but there's some challenges.
Is there some kind of flag or trigger point at what, so in other communities, when you follow and talk to the other communities that have unfortunately had to go through what our community is going through, they have had to pass ordinances around debris removal just to, so that when people are moving back in, they don't still have to live next to debris? And so, is there some kind of a trigger or flag that we'll need to know, like, hey, at this point, if nothing happens, we really need to have a conversation about what we would do?
At some point, potentially, that could come before City Council if we decide that we need to have enforcement action that's very specific related to this event and a deadline. At this point, we continue to remain hopeful that properties are going to, you know, continue moving forward on a basis that gets these lots cleared, hopefully early this fall, but it's something that we're monitoring, and we'll have to work with city attorney and potentially bring something back if it looks like we're not going to get this complete.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand, it's on our radar, and then we'll hopefully not have to talk about it again because you're in contact and it's maybe going okay, but if we need to, you'll bring it back to our attention?
Yes, and I think if City Council has thoughts or direction around what timeline should be expected for all lots to be complete, that would be helpful for us to understand if there is an expectation that you all have when all of the work is complete. That would be helpful to know. For example, I know Boulder County, I believe, is communicating the end of September for debris removal to be complete, and I don't believe Town Superior has kind of a deadline when they expect it to be done.
Okay, thank you. I think that's something to think about, for the whole community to think about, but hopefully, we won't have to cross that bridge and it will just work itself out. It sounds like it's on a fairly okay path. So the next one is just around DRC and billing, maybe an esoteric question that we don't have an answer for tonight, but I know early on, there were some ineligible items that were being removed, just sort of mistakenly, I guess is how I'll describe it. Have we seen any of the billing from that yet? And do we anticipate them trying to recover those costs from us? Or do they recognize that that was a mistake on their behalf, and that's not something that should be passed on?
Yeah, I can't give you enough specificity only because this issue has not bubbled up lately at all, which in my mind is a good thing. If it was DRC coming to us for money, we would be talking about it regularly, but I will find out with the attorneys where that landed and what the issue is with that.
Great. Thank you for that. And similar issue, early on, there were some communication issues that led to items being removed or destroyed that weren't supposed to on private property?
Yeah.
Has DRC's insurance, have we determined whose insurance is going to cover those?
Not yet. We haven't determined if there's any level of negligence and what remedial means we have at our disposal to address that. So, again, I'll confer with the attorneys and have them follow up with you this week.
If there's some way we can communicate the, to the community members that lost things, what the process is on that, I think that would be useful, just so people understand that there are many different insurance companies and attorneys that have to decide what the process is, and then we can understand the conversation points and where the decision points are.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
That makes sense. Okay, I'll take care of that.
Are there any other questions right now on debris removal? All right.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So the next topic is rebuilding updates.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Lisa Ritchie, Fire Recovery and Planning Manager, here to chat a little bit about the efforts that we've taken as the city to facilitate rebuilding for our residents. So immediately following the fire, as we became aware of, you know, the need to rebuild 550 homes here in the city, us in the, you know, we in the planning department, I think, recognized right away that there were some inconsistencies with how the regulations have been applied over the years. So we did a pretty quick evaluation of pre-fire conditions, identified these inconsistencies, and then you all as City Council, back in February, approved ordinance 1824, series 2022. And that allowed us to make administrative determinations. In addition, we published, you know, specific handouts and a lot of information for each neighborhood, really with the goal of trying to get the information readily accessible to families that were affected as well as design professionals. Next, as Cameron mentioned, we have been really working hard on the building permit process. And so, I just want to state that, you know, we acknowledge that most, every one of these families and households had no intention of rebuilding a home this year, and so we recognized that we needed to tailor a permit process and communications to meet those needs. As well as, we really did a deep dive, and we evaluated every part of our permit process to make sure that it's necessary and efficient. And so, through that, we identified, you know, some procedural changes that we've applied citywide, as well as some tailored permit review and staffing to meet the need to rebuild. And so, and along with that, we also developed a dedicated right-of-way permit that allows storage of certain materials and right-of-way. And so, to Councilmember Most's point earlier, you know, one of the things we talk about probably on a daily basis within our office is how can we facilitate rebuilding of a lot of homes by individual contractors in really tight quarters? And so, what we've committed to is just continuing to be transparent with all of our contractors, with all of our homeowners, thinking creatively throughout the process, where can we improve? What can we do better? What do we need to change along the way? And again, one of those is allowing storage of materials and right-of-way. That's unusual. That's new. And I only bring that up just to say that we're looking at a lot of different things. Really, any item is on the table for discussion, and we welcome new ideas as well. In order to respond to the increased permit volume over and above what our office normally handles in any given year, we have hired one additional plans analyst. That's the staff member that reviews the building permits against the building codes. We also have five part-time plans analysts. We have hired one additional building inspector that, these two full-time positions are already onboard, and they're getting trained up to meet the wave of permits that we're expecting later this summer and this fall. In addition, we have contract support for construction oversight, building inspection, and plans review. So if the additional staff that we've hired can't meet the need for permit review, we do have backup through third-party plans examiners and inspectors. And then, what have we done along the way? So again, recognizing that, you know, a lot of these homeowners were unfamiliar with how to build a house, as well as tailored communication for contractors who maybe hadn't worked in Lewisville before, we are offering online and in-person appointments. To date, we've had 117, so we are really, really happy with the number of conversations that we've been able to have, and hopefully, residents and building professionals find those helpful and make it through the permit review process more quickly. We're doing meetings with fire-affected neighborhoods, meetings with the Marshall Together Neighborhood Liaisons, we've done online webinars, meetings with design professionals and contractors. Prior to construction, we hold a pre-construction meeting with all general contractors so that they clearly know what's expected of them out there in the field, how to schedule inspections, how to establish communication with our staff. We have stood up a dedicated web resource for all information related to rebuilding, as well as staff internally holds, it's like it's bi-weekly meetings with outside utility agencies to ensure coordination of repair work. So we, as Megan had noted earlier, are spending significant amount of staff time and resources on rebuilding efforts to make sure we can get our residents back home quickly as we can. Happy to answer any questions on permitting.
Councilmember Most.
Questions tonight. Thank you so much, Lisa. That's super helpful. So I just have a couple of questions. I'm trying to understand, and I don't know whether or not you'll know the answer to these, and maybe this is something that's going to have to wait until the budget discussion on Thursday at our budget retreat, but I'm just wondering if you have a, the first question is on the variances. You talked about being able to, you know, sort of we empowered the planning department to provide these variances to speed the process. And are those variances on size, on setbacks, on anything? Or how does, if you can talk about that a little bit, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. That's a good question. We are offering what we call the 10% recovery variance, and you all did authorize that through ordinance 1824, and that allows staff to approve a 10% adjustment to basically any measurable standard. So if the rear setback is 20 feet, you could get up to two feet of relief to allow an 18-foot rear setback. For lot coverage, if it's 30%, you could go up to 33%. And so, generally, you know, we're getting these, we're encouraging folks to apply before they submit their building permit. That way, they don't get all the way through design before they run into an issue with their recovery variance, and we have approved a number of them to date. Sometimes we'll work with design professionals to tweak and modify it a little bit, and sometimes we're approving as submitted.
Okay, great. That's terrific. Thank you. And then, the other thing, this goes to sort of the broader impact to the organization and, you know, your departments in general. Do you have a sense of what that impact is, what, you know, what the scope of those costs are, and how long we anticipate those continuing within the community?
That's a really great question, and our crystal ball is not that great. And I know that this is a big, a big topic of discussion, right? What are the assumptions that we're working from? And I do have a couple later slides if we want to go through these now. This might be a good transition. So the survey results that we did publish and put in the packet, you know, we're actively trying to work and understand, when is this wave of permitting coming? Are we staffed correctly? Are we overstaffed now and we're going to need it later? Are we understaffed now? How do we need to ramp up? You can see from the results of the survey, granted, it was less than 200 respondents, and it's hard to say, you know, which way this is leaning, who would have, who would have responded, but, you know, of this, 80% are actively working to rebuild. And then, of those 80% that are actively working to rebuild, a good majority of those are intending to submit their permit here very shortly, within the next zero to three months. And so, what we did, you know, probably back in February, was we looked at our existing capacity, how many permits we review, how long does it take? How many hours does it take to look at a single-family rebuild? We looked at the staffing we had, and then we used some assumptions for percentage of rebuilt permits over the next, you know, two years for permit applications, and then three years to get them through the inspection process. And that's where we estimated that, based on the staffing that I discussed, we felt like we would be able to meet that need. That did assume that they were a little more spread out than maybe what might happen this fall, and that's where that third-party contractor, those contractors can come in and meet that gap.
And they have flexibility to do that.
Yes.
Great. And then, the other question I had again is, so, you know, you did say that we had hired some full-time and some part-time folks, or are we, are those jobs that are anticipated to be for a period of time, and then they're going to, and the people, I assume, who we hired know that and understand that's part of this process?
Yeah, so the full-time plans analysts and the full-time building inspector were permanent full-time positions. We hired them on a permanent basis. The part-time, part-time plans analysts are on temporary-type contracts, knowing that this is dedicated for Marshall Fire, and they could be revisited on a regular basis based on need.
Okay. Thank you. And then, there's, let's see what else, if I can look in my notes. Okay, the other question I wanted to ask that I think is kind of interesting is part, in part, as part of this process, right? You guys are sort of innovating and streamlining and, you know, thinking differently about how we do planning and maybe permitting and all that stuff in the community. How much of that is likely to be retained as sort of innovation? of innovation that helps in the future with the community? How much of that do you think is just sort of specific to this bubble that we're going to have of rebuilding that hopefully, you know, will get done in a fairly short period of time, and then it will wind down?
I think that's good. I think I'll have an answer now, and then when you ask me in two years, I'll probably have a really different answer. But for now, I would imagine it's a mix of both. There are really unique and specific needs related to a volume of single-family home construction in a short amount of time, that we're unlikely to see that specific thing happening again. However, you know, the efficiencies, the right-of-way permitting, you know, some of the departmental processes, you know, changes to policy, I would hope that those stick around. And if they weren't right, we'll make adjustments and adjust them again.
Great. Thank you so much, Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Most, for your questions. And Lisa, you know, your presentation answered a lot of the questions that I had written down. So I think you've done a really good job of listening to people's concerns and so forth. You know, in the, one of the things you talked about was the staffing. That's a question that I get frequently, and so I really appreciate you explaining how the planning and building department is going to be able to ramp up around this. So thank you very much on that. One of the questions I get frequently is, you know, people who are early in the process, and they're very interested, they may already have a building permit, they may already be building, or they're anticipating they're having that soon. You know, so builders are really talking about, when are the utility services going to be restored? Primarily, we're talking about electricity and water, because those are really necessary for the rebuilding. What can you share with us on that particular topic?
That's a good question. Cameron, I'll kick the water one to you, for sure. And if you want to go ahead with the Excel, that's great, too.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Protam Maloney. So with regards to city services, those are not interrupted. We do have water mains that are currently in service. We are doing flushing in the burn areas on a regular basis to keep that water fresh. Sewer services, from all our investigations, are in pretty good shape. We did some random testing on those, so I think those are in good shape as well. And then we meet either weekly or bi-weekly with all the dry utilities, including Excel. We actually just had a meeting this morning, and they're anticipating starting rework of gas and electric in the next two to four weeks in the burn area. So they're kind of waiting for lots to get cleared out, so they don't have to dig through debris and dig through driveways to replace all those services.
All right. Thank you. And then Lisa, the question for you, my last question really is about fencing. A lot of these neighborhoods in their plan unit development or PUDs actually have worked with the city on specifying permit or fencing that we know is combustible. And could you talk about the strategy moving forward, not only the permit or fencing, but the fencing really for people's homes that connect to their homes, about non-combustible materials?
Sure. Good question. So let's talk first about the, there's a citywide ordinance that went to Planning Commission in July, and is anticipated to come in front of City Council, I believe, the first week of September. But this would allow, it would allow an exemption to install, to the requirement to install a combustible fence within the first five feet of a structure. So if your PUD requires wood fence within the first five feet connecting to the structure, you would be exempt from that requirement. And there would be some minimal design requirements to match the intent of the PUD. That passed through Planning Commission and would come to City Council here in the next few months, and that's citywide. Additionally, we are aware that there's a lot of neighborhoods, you know, that were affected by Marshall Fire, and the good portion of their fences were destroyed, primarily because they were combustible and constructed of wood. And so I am working, our department is working with a number of these neighborhoods, not all of them yet, but we are beginning conversations with how to amend their PUD in order to revise those materials to a non-combustible material. So I'm in connection with most of the neighborhood liaisons, and if anyone listening tonight hasn't been in contact with me on amending their fenced standards, and you're interested, you can reach out to the planning department. We're happy to work with you.
Thank you, Lisa, for leading our rebuilding efforts for the city and the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thanks, Mayor. Sorry to hit rewind. I'm kind of going back to where Councilmember Most was. This is sort of a rhetorical question I'd like an answer to, if that's fair. Do you feel like you as staff have the resources that you need for your planning department to process the permits? I know you don't know exactly how they're going to come in, but is there anything else that you need as a staff from council? Because one of the things, we've talked about it for a long time, is this is something under our control. Like, there are a lot of things outside of our control, but being staffed and ready to process permits timely, because time is, it's one of these, people are going to be very frustrated with us if we are a source of delay when we could not be a source of delay. And so I just want to make sure that you're feeling at least as much as you know of what's going to happen, that you have the resources you need. And if you needed more resources, you feel like you either already have direction to get those, or you'd be able to come back quickly enough to ramp up. Because I just don't want us to be in a situation where we're, you know, stepping on our own toes here, when we are in control of that permitting process.
That's a great question, and again, something I think we think about on a really regular basis. I do have to say that, you know, City Manager's Office, the HR Department, is through City Council, you know, through direction from City Council to allow us to staff up already, has, we feel that we're staffed appropriately for now. I think it's a little bit of a mix. The bigger your staff gets, you know, we could hire more, but then you run into some inconsistencies. And, you know, as you know, City Hall is already crowded, and where would we put folks? And then it's communication challenges. So we're really trying to find kind of the sweet spot of both efficiency and not becoming too unwieldy with a lot of part-timers that maybe don't do things the way that, you know, we would operate consistently. But we will certainly let you know if there's additional needs we identify through City Manager's Office.
All right. Looking for council questions on this topic. I have just a couple, Director Ritchie. Thank you. The, I've gotten a lot of questions from folks just around plan review. You know, like you described, no one wanted to do this, and, you know, this wasn't on anyone's bucket list even. And so these different processes can feel pretty frustrating. So can you just take a moment to describe plan review a little bit to us, and the types of things? You know, if you're, this happens all the time on City Council, I'll just make a quick aside, that, you know, one neighbor wants to do something, and they love it, and it's wonderful, and it's, you know, to make their life better. And then another neighbor hates it, and it's like, I can't believe my neighbor is doing this thing. And so on City Council, you hear kind of the two sides of that quite often. So if you could kind of describe plan review and the types of things that you find, and like why people might have to come back in for a resubmission?
Absolutely. So generally speaking, the process, you know, we have all this on our website, but homeowners, through their design professionals or themselves, they can, as a homeowner, submit a permit all on their own, but they'll submit what we call, you know, a complete permit package. So the best way to get through the process quickly is to make sure you have everything complete and accurate and organized in the structure that we've laid out. Once we get that permit, we have our permit technician, our admins within our department compile everything, organize it, and then they notify the appropriate staff member that, hey, we've got a new permit in. And there's three departments, sometimes four, that review permits. So the building department reviews it for building code compliance. So for the energy codes, your installation, your framing, your structural, things like that. Planning looks at it for conformance with zoning, so height and setbacks. And then Public Works is also looking at it for grading and drainage and some other utility needs. So just to make sure that there's no surprises. And then if a homeowner elects to add fire sprinklers, which aren't required, then we set the, we send also some the permit to the fire district, and their staff reviews it for the fire sprinklers. So what we, our turnaround on that first time roughly runs around two to three weeks. We're trying to get everything reviewed the first time within two weeks. If, and this is pretty much for every permit so far, at least one portion of the permit needs a resubmital, the staff member that needs to have that changed, so if it's Public Works, Public Works will email them. If it's planning, we'll email them, or the building code will email the, whoever is on the permit, and will request a resubmital. And then however long it takes for that resubmital to happen, sometimes it's a matter of days, sometimes it's a couple of weeks. So we are no longer in control. The city is no longer in control of the timeline from once we send the comment to when we get it back. That's on the contractor. And then when we get the resubmital, the same thing happens. It comes in through the portal, our permit techs process it, send it out to the appropriate review, and then it can take up to another couple of weeks to review. And we do that as many times as we need, hopefully not more than twice. Contractors are getting better. The plans are coming in a little bit better now that we're starting to see these repeats. But this is why I think those pre-construction meetings are important. The meetings with staff ahead of time are important. Helps our reviews go more quickly.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson has a follow-up.
It is, on that topic, are you noticing or are you anticipating efficiencies of builders bringing the same design for multiple homes?
We haven't seen that yet. So we are, sometimes with production builders, builders that build, you know, a lot of projects in a community, they'll do what we call a master permit, where they submit basically one permit that then they can replicate across many lots. We've worked with a couple builders who might consider master permits, but to date, we don't, we haven't gotten far on those. They haven't finalized those yet.
Thank you for explaining that. And so if, you know, like the drainage was draining all onto a neighbor's property, or the house is in the wrong location on the property, you know, too close to a neighbor, something like that, that would have to be changed, and that's what would cause a resubmission, something like that?
Yes.
Thank you. And the next question I have is really for our interim city manager, Davis. And this is, you know, sometimes on City Council, we get into City Council language. Anytime you do a new job, you find you have to learn a new language. And so I've gotten a lot of emails today where I think people are interchanging some language, and so I'm just carefully separating them back apart, because from how we, how we fund things and do things, it matters on our side. But I completely understand it doesn't matter if you're paying the bill, how we separate this. But it does matter on our side. So I'm just asking about building permit fees, which is, which is separate from the use tax topic, which we'll talk about in a minute. But just the building permit fees that cover our building-related costs. Can you just sort of talk to us, interim manager Davis, around where the council direction is on that right now? And then, you know, if we do find economies of scale or cost savings, how we might be able to rebate back if someone's already paid? Because I know, you know, we already have a handful of permits through.
Sure. Yeah. So, you know, the permit fees, and we can talk a little bit more about this when we talk about the use tax, too, but the permit fees are really to directly cover the cost of administration for the work that Lisa just described. And so that's what the permit fees are collected for. So we do visit our permit fees on a regular basis to make sure that they're consistent with the work that we're doing and how we're administering the work. So right now, City Council has given staff direction to determine if the fees that we're collecting are in, you know, excess of the programs and services that are necessary to respond to the Marshall Fire and the rebuilds associated with that. And if we find that there's, you know, any inconsistency there, then we can determine a way to rebate or pass on, you know, any discrepancy.
Thank you. Any other question on the, on the rebuilding update portion? All right. Seeing none, our next topic is, thank you, Lisa. Our next topic's the use tax update, and I'll turn it over to our interim city manager, Megan Davis.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So I'm just going to spend a little bit of time providing some general information regarding, oh, thanks, Lisa, regarding the use tax and permit fees. A lot of this is in the packet, some of the kind of detailed information, but we'll, we're happy to answer questions and then can have further discussion as council desires, if there's any next steps or actions that you would like staff to take around this. So use tax is a reciprocal tax, which means that instead of paying sales tax at the point of sale, the purchaser is paying the use tax to the city upfront. Many tax jurisdictions have a use tax imposed when sales tax is not collected on certain items. If the city didn't have or eliminated the use tax in Louisville, then the purchaser of these materials, so for example, in this case, we'd be talking about likely construction materials, would pay the local sales tax at the point of purchase. So it could be if they bought them in Brighton or some, you know, any Boulder. And they would pay, would not pay taxes to Louisville and the location that the construction or development is happening. So that's really the kind of purpose of the use tax, is to ensure that businesses and residents help fund the city services, regardless of where they're purchased. Our use tax in the city of Louisville is 3.65%. It's a voter-approved tax, and the revenues are dedicated and restricted for use within specific funds. 3% is restricted for capital improvements or debt services on capital improvements. 0.35% is restricted for acquisition and maintenance of land in and around the city, used for open space, buffer zones, trails, wildlife habitats, wetlands, preservation, and parks. 0.125% is restricted for historic preservation purposes, and 0.15% is restricted for operating and maintenance of the Louisville Recreation and Senior Center and the pools facility at Memory Square. So this is just kind of an overview. So with the way the use tax is levied and collected, the restricted nature of these revenues to specific funds, elimination or waiving of the use tax really isn't feasible. Council could consider a rebate or grant program, which would likely occur through the general fund in order to provide tax relief, if that's what council would like to do. And we, staff will work with council to determine the best approach for implementing something of this nature. And I will say, this is really the first discussion that we've had, kind of around this, here with City Council to get direction. And so we, we would need to do, you know, some analysis and get some additional information. We'll try to give you as much detail as we can and answer your questions tonight that we possibly can. So permit fees are collected separately, and as I mentioned previously, they're evaluated regularly. We have provided a table. It's in the packet. I'll just share it. And this table provides an overview of the city's building permit fees and the use tax that would be associated with rebuilding at various levels. So you can see if it were a $500,000, $700,000, $1 million, 1.5 million, or $2 million rebuild, what the city of Louisville's building permit fees and use tax estimates would be for that type of rebuild. We also provided some comparison with the town of Superior and unincorporated Boulder County. The table illustrates the fees and taxes in Superior, both with and without the rebate that is being provided to Marshall Fire rebuilds. I will mention that Boulder County has a disaster rebuild discount, which is specific to rebuilding under certain conditions or parameters. So we don't have all that information here, but we're, I know Planner Ritchie, yeah, has some more details around that, if you would like to hear that.
Mayor, can I ask a question while we're on the table?
Just fine. Councilmember Dickinson?
Just because we're looking at this table, the top number is the 500 to 2 million. Is that the value of the home was completed? Is that the cost of construction? Is that the cost of materials of construction? Just so we understand that header line.
So that is how our building permit fees are, based on valuation. So that's the cost of construction and labor. It's not necessarily the market value of the home.
Cost of building.
Cost of the building, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So as a sort of separate but related matter, the, is the increased budget associated with the Marshall Fire and the rebuilding expenses? And this is because typically the funds that are generated from the use tax are used for all of the restricted funds, including capital project funds and, and projects associated with that. So the city will be discussing the 2023-24 budget planning at the council retreat on Thursday, and the packet is out for that. And if you've taken a look at that, we are not in the same financial position that we were on January 1st, 2022. And so when we have that discussion on Thursday, council will really have a chance to get a full picture of the current and projected budget impacts, and kind of the forces that that's had on the budget. And it'll just give you a little bit more context around this particular issue, and what all of these different kind of financial inputs, how they relate to the city's budget. So we are happy to answer questions, and we know that there will be comments from the community as well on this issue.
Thank you, interim manager Davis. Councilmember Most.
Yeah, thank you, City Manager Davis. The, I'm just wondering if we know, you specifically said that Louisville's use tax is restricted, that it goes to specific funds, and we can't change that, because that was something that was passed by the voters. Is that correct? Do you know if Boulder County or Superior have the same limitations on their use taxes? Or is that beyond your specific knowledge right now?
Yeah, I cannot, I do not know Superior. Planner Ritchie might, I don't- Yeah, I, I cannot, I do not know Superior. Planner Ritchie might, I, I don't, I'm not sure specifically.
I'll just add in a little bit of information. So for the past couple of months, we've been working with the state, trying to come up with different programs. And Superior and Lewisville have been advocating for state funding to backfill building permit fees and use taxes, and not successfully. So don't get your hopes up. But we've been trying to get additional funding to be able to cover those costs for, for families. And in that, I've learned some of the answers to your questions. So that's the context in which I know this. The county has indicated that their use tax is restricted and bonded against, and so they can't rebate it in their case. But similarly to our discussion, just like you laid out for us, we could do a grant program out of the general fund. So I know that that's a level of detail. Many people in the audience, it's like, just say yes or no, but we have to figure out a way to get to yes. It's like, how do you develop a program that works? So please don't misunderstand my statement for saying we can't just do that to mean that we can't do anything. It's just, we can't just do that. So the counties indicated the same thing, that they couldn't just rebate it because it's restricted against debt service. So they would have to do a grant program out of the general fund, and they've indicated they don't have any interest in pursuing that at this time. And Superior is not restricted, it's in the general fund. And so their rebate was slightly, it's slightly different set of circumstances for them to be able to do their rebate. But similarly, they couldn't waive it. You know, so they took it in and then rebated it back similarly. So there is some level of complication at each level. And then the other governmental agencies have similar problems. So RTD has been there with us at the state advocating. Similarly, RTD taxes were passed by the voters for specific transit services. And so they can't rebate it. And they're in a different place even, because their general fund, they're going to have a really hard time arguing that there's a public purpose within their charge. So each agency has a slightly different, SCFD has yet a slightly different one, and the state, theirs is a sales tax, not a use tax, but there are slightly different issues around theirs as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. City manager Davis, can you, the mayor brought up an interesting point about bonding against use taxes or against revenue. In what cases is that a situation that Lewisville is in? Have we bonded against any of this use tax revenue, I guess?
I would, I would like to defer to Director Watson.
Okay.
Who can give you more details about, you know, our bonding process, and if we have bonding obligations, and where they are.
Director Watson is joining us by Zoom. And Kevin, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Yes, we have bonded against our sales and use tax for our recreation center improvements. That would create, if we wanted to do that again, we would have to, per tabor, we would have to go to an election for that. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you, Director.
Other questions from folks on this topic? I'm not seeing other questions at this time on this topic. And so that takes us to new resources.
Okay, I'm going to kick this off. Thanks again, Lisa. All right. So this'll, we're not going to go into a whole lot of detail about the resources, but I do want to talk a little bit about some of the resources and services that are kind of newer, that are available to residents impacted by the Marshall fire. And we know that folks are closely monitoring these as well. So we did provide in the packet some links to information if people don't know where to access some of these services. And we have someone here with DOLA tonight who's going to talk a little bit about some of the funding as well. So just, some of the newer resources include the Marshall fire recovery navigators, which is a service that will provide residents with a direct individual to help them navigate recovery resources of all kinds, including financial resources, any community resources, unmet needs that they might have, give them kind of support and direction around any issues they might be encountering with navigating various processes, insurance giving, connecting them with, with folks to help. And then we'll be working closely with the planning and building department to make sure that they understand the, the kind of general nature of our process and, and what resources we can provide to them as well. Beginning Monday, some of the navigators will be temporarily, temporarily located in the White House Building, which is directly adjacent to City Hall. And we anticipate they'll be in this location for a couple of months until the recovery center is stood up. And I know they're looking for locations for the recovery center. We're not sure exactly where that will be. So there are also two new programs funded through the state of Colorado, the SB 22206 bill, including the disaster resilience rebuilding program and energy efficiency incentives. So we have Chris Lemay from DOLA, who's going to give us a brief overview of those programs. Before he starts, I just want to call people's attention to the rebuilding better workshops that the city of Lewisville, Superior, and Boulder County have been hosting. And they are to help residents navigate tools and resources about rebates, incentives, and financing that is available. And the next one is coming up on August 3rd from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the REC Center. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Lemay. He's the North Central Regional Manager of DOLA, and he's just going to give us a little bit of detail about the new disaster resilience rebuilding program. Chris, I'll try to get your PowerPoint up here for you.
Okay. Oops. Okay. All right. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the invitation to come speak to you tonight. What I'd like to do is kind of give you an overview of the programs that have been created through the recent passage of Senate Bill 22206. The Senate Bill 22206 has really three components to it. I didn't really identify the third, which is that it creates the office of climate preparedness. But in addition to that, it is creating two reconstruction programs, if you will. One is the $15 million that was appropriated for the disaster resiliency rebuilding program. That involves grants and loans to property owners that intend to build back. The, is also some conversation going on about whether or not, if there's some additional funds after the grants and loans are provided for the rebuilding efforts, that there may be some opportunity to incentivize some of the fire mitigation construction practices that would benefit future episodes. The, the other program is the sustainable rebuilding electrification program. And there was $20 million that was appropriated for that purpose, which is being funneled through the Colorado Energy Office, and they are offering $10,000 incentives, incentive grants for electrification for the residential units. In addition to this, that we at DOLA have access to the community development block grant money, which we get on an annual basis, and they have, a decision was made to take $6 million of that CDBG money this year and allocate it directly to the recovery efforts for the Marshall fire. And then there was the CDBG community development block grant money, this is federal, federal money, disaster recovery, the CDBG DR money, that was also provided to the tune of about $7.5 million. And so those resources, combined with our $15 million in the resiliency rebuilding program, will be used to provide grants and loans to property owners that intend to rebuild. The grant portion is going to be based on income and where you fall within the various income levels. You'll see that if less than 80% of the area median income, you would be eligible for a grant up to $50,000. If you exceed 150% of the area median income, you would not be eligible for any grant proceeds. So the way, the way the, the table works, for instance, let's assume I'm, I'm making $125,400, and I got a family of four. So I'm going to fall within the 100% AMI. I would be eligible in that household for a grant of $37,500. If I'm single and I'm making $63,000, and I'm at 80%, I, I would, could be eligible up to $50,000. So that's for the grant portion of the, of the program. We're also providing loans for the rebuilding efforts, and that's available to all income levels. The terms of those loans would be comparable to what's being provided through the SBA home loan. And essentially, you're looking at, you know, interest rates two, below 2%. The loans would be capped at $50,000, and that's simply just based on the amount of money that's available. We felt that $50,000 would be the appropriate figure, so that there's enough for everybody. Some of the other additional requirement, eligibility, eligibility requirements for the, for these loans and grants do include that you have to have, property must have been damaged or destroyed in a state-declared disaster from 2018 forward. And I guess I should have said that earlier. This isn't, this program is not just specific to the Marshall fire. It goes for state-declared disasters dating back to 2018. The home must be owner-occupied as a primary residence on the date of the, of the disaster declaration. In order to be eligible, you must follow the current codes. And if, if someone chooses to opt out of the current codes that are adopted by the local jurisdiction, they would not be eligible. Second homes are not going to be eligible through the program, and rental properties at this point would not be eligible for the loan as well. The intent of the program is that you would be asked to, that there would be an estimate of, of the, of the construction cost for the home, and then costs deducted would be, we'd look at how much insurance the homeowner is receiving, what kind of FEMA, if they received any sort of FEMA assistance, if they got an SBA loan, and we would essentially deduct down and, and try to fill the gap. And that gap with a max being $50,000 in loan, potentially $50,000 in grant. The, the other program that I think has been well-publicized is the electrification grant. And that, going through this Colorado Energy Office, would look at high-efficiency electric homes, $10,000 grants available, available if they're installing heat pumps, heat pump, water heaters, and induction stoves. And again, this is on top of the Excel rebates that are being offered by Excel Energy. Again, limited to primary homes, not vacation homes or other second homes. And some of the details are still being worked out on that. As I discussed initially, you know, there is some conversation going on about helping out with fire construction above and beyond codes. And this is still kind of under, being discussed and, and worked through. And that's really going to be contingent on whether or not there's money left over after all the other loans and grants have gone out. But we'll have more, more to provide you as that program moves forward. The intent is to use the Boulder County Recovery Navigator system, and that a homeowner could come through that, the navigator, and the navigator, after filling out an application, would be able to determine whether or not the property owner would be eligible for the grant loan, CEO incentive, and, and other funding. Probably the best source of information you can find on this right now is on our website and under our frequently asked questions. It does detail quite a bit of information. It also has the ability to ask a question. So you can go to that website, and if there's something in there that you still don't know the answer to, and would like an answer, you're able to essentially fill out a survey and, and pose a question that will, the staff will respond to you. So with that, entertain any questions.
Chris, I'm sure there'll be a number of questions. I'll just try to start out, but maybe if you could go over a couple things again in some more detail, and that might help with some of them. So we have, this is a new program, and so I understand, you know, you guys are working out the details and getting the information out. And so some of this may be still be worked on, but maybe you have all, all the answers tonight for us. So we've gotten a number of questions around like the grant program versus the loan program. So if you go back to just the grant program, if you qualify for the grant program, you qualify for the grant program? Like if you go back to that table, is that how that works, or is that still based on the gap calculation?
Yeah, I mean, the, the grant is intended to fill, help fill the gap.
Okay.
As well. It's not...
So there've been a number of questions about that gap calculation. I don't know if you can go into that in any more detail tonight.
Yeah.
So people have been working really hard with the federal government, with the FEMA and SBA, and there's a lot that's not final until you get actual building costs and receipts. And, and those things won't be final for a long, long time. So like, for example, the SBA loan value is not a number that's, that's not something you can just say, this is exactly what it is. That number is a moving target for people. And so it's really unclear if we're saying that the SBA loan makes up a portion of the insurance gap, how that will be calculated, because it's not clear to people what their SBA loan will ultimately be.
Okay, so what they'll, you know, initially, there would be a, there'll be a software package that helps determine kind of the standard construction cost for a, a structure. And then that value is what we'll start with. And then we would deduct the private insurance that they receive. We would deduct any, the SBA loan. And so if that's $240,000, you know, there's potential that there may not be a gap. But if there's still a gap, then they could, and they qualify based on income.
I guess what I'm, I would, I was trying to ask if you could describe more about how you'll determine the SBA loan value, if that's something that people can't even determine themselves.
That, I, that's a good question. I don't know that I have an answer for you tonight.
Okay. If, if we could just keep order, I know it's really hard, but we want a really welcoming environment where everybody feels comfortable giving their diverse perspectives. And so there may be different times where people disagree, and it's just, or the information's not known. And I just know everybody is trying their hardest, and I appreciate the state staff for coming in tonight and trying to help us. So if we get the questions on the table, they can go back and help us find out the answers and figure out how to, how to navigate it forward. So I just, I think there'll be a lot of questions on the calculation of that gap. And the more information we can provide that's, helps people understand if there is any, if there is any resource here, the better, because people are just looking for information so they can make their decisions sooner than later. And I think right now with the information we have on the program, it's just really hard to be able to tell what, if anything, people qualify for. So that's just the nature of what I think a number of the questions are going to be revolving around, whether it's the SBA being included there, or if it's, you know, like using the energy efficiency incentives. Like if that's used in the gap calculation, then you've taken away someone's incentive for efficiency upgrades. Like that's supposed to be an incentive on top and above, not a gap coverage. So I just, I think there are a number of questions the community has raised about it that mainly come from not understanding how this will be calculated and exactly what qualifies. And then it's just not clear to me if there's still any opportunity for input into the process to, to adjust the formula.
Yeah, so I'll answer the, the incentive question as far as the $10,000 incentive from the CEO. That would be above and beyond the grant loan program.
Great.
For the resiliency rebuilding program. Yes, this is still being worked through. And so if there are, again, and I think quite frankly, that form that you're able to submit and ask questions helps us as well, because, you know, if there are challenges or issues that we haven't identified, then we can do that before we actually start the application process and
Awesome.
Have the forms filled out.
Can you put the link back up for that while you answer other folks' questions? That would be really helpful. Thank you very much. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I just want to make sure, like, you threw out a lot of information, and I really appreciate the mayor's questions, because I think a lot of folks still have questions. I think a very basic question is, it sounds like there are two programs, and forgive me for sort of reiterating what you're, what you've, you've told us tonight, but it sounds like there's two programs, the grant slash loan program, and then there's another program related to another program related to resiliency. Is that correct? Or are they both related?
Well, I think some of it's just the way programs have been named and they're, they're, think of it this way, there, there's a program for rebuilding and covering the gap for rebuilding efforts exclusive of electrification and what have you. But there's, and then there's the second program, which is for the incentive for the electrification.
Okay. So the first program with the grant that you described is general, just general covering the gap of under insurance. And then the second, the second program is related to the resiliency efforts, the electrification and whatnot.
The reason that he's pausing is because the first program is called the resiliency program. So the fact that you're using the word resiliency is causing a problem.
Sorry, excuse me.
Stop using that word.
Stop using that word. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
So the, the other, the other program, the other program. That's very helpful. I appreciate that. The, I think I'm going to, yeah, that's, that's good enough for now. Sorry. Thank you.
Councilmember Most.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Brown. That was on my question list too. What is the method that's going to be used to determines people, people's financial eligibility? You have broken down these categories.
Yeah. So as far as the figuring out where, where they fall within that table, it's going to be based on verification of wages and, and it's what, you know, I don't want to say it's gross income, but it's about as close to the gross, gross income as you can get. And so it'll be, you'll have to provide evidence of what your gross income is.
And I assume that's also being a person that's self-employed. I assume you'll, you have some methodology for people who are self-employed because that's always very different. And is, is your agency going to be doing that? Is there, how is that evaluation going to be handled and processed?
Well, so the intent is that it would, we would, that we would have kind of a seamless, trying to have a seamless process with Boulder County navigators that you essentially would come in, you would fill out an application. And in that application, you would be asked some financial information. And we'd be able to determine what direction and what program, what, what portion of the money, if it's federal money, because that has some limitations related to income levels and things like that, that we would use that same process so that they're filling out one application.
Okay. And what about validation? Are you going to require people to submit income tax? Are you going to link? I know for some of the programs I've had to apply for, there's an automatic link to the IRS, which you can just allow them to do it and they can pull it down. I'm just trying to, you know, hopefully make it easier for people so they're not, you know, if you have complicated taxes, you're not submitting pages and pages of taxes.
Yeah. And I, and I don't know this, I don't know how, how, how the, the nuts and bolts of it's going to work as far as once you submit and, but there will be, there will be verification because we want to ensure that we're, you know, indeed providing, if it's a grant, providing grant to the appropriate person in that income range. So.
So maybe one of the things that needs to put on, be submitted is to, you know, request that that's done so people can check a box and it can automatically be done through the IRS so they don't have to submit more paperwork.
Mayor Protimaloney?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, thank you very much for being with us. And I kind of feel for you in the middle of trying to administer a process with a lot of definitions still to go. And so, you know, the questions coming from me and my colleagues are really about trying to be advocates for our citizens who are trying to rebuild and trying to, you know, help you develop a process that works for everybody. So one question I had, you know, I'm on Zoom, so I really couldn't read the slide very well, but will the state be using the HUD income limits and using the average median income calculation when they look at income?
Yeah. And then, and we'll actually be using the, the data that it's specific to Boulder County median, household median income table.
Okay.
That's available on the website as well. And yeah, yes.
Thank you, Chris. The, the second part of it is, is that, you know, we have a lot of people regardless of their average median income are heavily underinsured. How will that be calculated? Is that part of the gap analysis? And then will they, based upon amount of uninsured, be able to take advantage of some of these programs? Because is, is it just income or is it income and amount of underinsured?
So the grants will be tied to income. The loans would, are exclusive of income. And yes, so if somebody, if, if, if there is a gap that is demonstrated and the insurance doesn't cover the entire portion and/or other resources, that yes, they would, they would be eligible for the loan portion of it regardless of income. I'm sorry, did I, did I answer that?
I, I think you did. I think you said the grant portion is based on income, period. But if they still have a gap and they're, and the, you know, let's say they're 100 and 120% of AMI, they can still get the loan.
Correct.
Okay. And all right. Thank you very much, Chris. And we'll, we'll work with you certainly to have patience in working through this process in the best interest of our citizens. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thanks, Chris, for being here. This is tons of really great information. What my brain is kind of doing is, got a fire, I've got a cough, trying to find you up there. I'm right here, Chris. Come on. Yeah. I, I look at me up there too.
Ventriloquist.
So, yeah, exactly. I was like, what is so interesting? So, you know, I lost my home in a fire. Let's say the rebuild is a million dollars. My insurance covers a million dollars. Conversation over, right? Pretty much is, is the first line of defense there. If your insurance covers you, we're done. Now, there's still incentive programs through Excel and through here that we can, you could get some money on top of because you're doing something, maybe we'll call it above and beyond. So then if, let's say the construction costs are a million, but my, my insurance is 800, now we have a gap and now we're having a conversation. So if I'm low income, I can get some grants, I'm like, don't have to pay them back and I have opportunity towards that. But as Council, or Mayor Protimaloney is pointing out, even if I am high income and I have a $200,000 gap, now I have an opportunity maybe for grant, or sorry, for loans. These loans have like a not 0% chance of being forgiven, but well, that's a separate conversation maybe. But anyways, still access to the funds to get the job done, but because I'm of higher income, it's likely a loan, not a grant that I'll have to repay, but my house should be worth more and I'm doing these things and maybe I'm not out of pocket as much. And so that's kind of what I'm hearing there. Really, in a lot of ways, really well done, really complicated.
Up to 50,000.
The, the loan is up to 50.
Yeah, it's capped.
And again, of course capped at gaps. So if my gap's 20K, I'm limited to 20K. If my gap's 200, I'm still limited to 50 if I'm above the AMI level depending. So that was a complicated table, but I might, I might not get my full gap covered if my income is too high. Is that fair from?
Yeah, it's fair to say that, you know, and when I say gap, I don't, I don't, you know, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that this is going to make everybody whole.
Yeah. Okay.
I want to make sure that's clear.
So, you know, one of the things that is really profound for me is, well, there's order of operations, if you will. Like, I would like to design my home yesterday and I don't understand how much money I'm going to have. But when I'm done building my home, then we can have a conversation about, oh, that wasn't enough money, I'm screwed. Right? So like, order of operations is I need to know now what I'm going to be able to be eligible for, qualify for, get, so that I can design, so that I can submit a permit, so that I can pay a permit fee or less than and a use tax or less than. Like, I'm going to get all these answers. I'm not, you're not the cog in the wheel here, but like, there's so many things that I'm going to find out when I'm done, but it's hard to be done because I, I don't know what I'm going to get, so I can't start. And so I think that's where a lot of frustration is, is like, well, tell me, tell me exactly what's going to happen. And so what I'm, what I'm noticing here, what I'm really want to focus on is this recovery navigator role position tool asset that we have as a community is profoundly important because this is complicated for me and I've got some time to look at it. This is complicated for yourself, for the mayor. This is complicated. And one of the things that we heard from people for months, six months going on, is I just, I can't handle the complication. And this was brought up at the very beginning of this whole, whole presentation is these, by and large, people not prepared for or happy to do a remodel, a construction project of any kind. And so we're trying to figure out, okay, 50 options, 20 different ways to get there, six different entities, tons of support, but it's complicated. It's really complicated. And so, you know, I'm, what I'm trying to get our heads around is this recovery navigator position is going to be incredibly important for creating some simplicity. And I'm just hoping there's going to be some sort of way for people to get through and be like, okay, I understand who I am, what my situation is, what I'm eligible for, what I can expect, what I can hope for, but I can't be promised. And I understand what I'm taking a risk to do and I understand what my likely support structure is, but I can't ask Jane Doe to figure all this out tomorrow, right? It's, this is complicated for me in this moment, getting all this background. So for our people who are trying to rebuild a home, is that, is that the resource that we're expecting them to get all of their answers from to be able to navigate this process? Because it's, it's, and I don't blame you for the complexity or blame all of us for the complexity. It has to be. But I mean, it, it is so complex. So how does one get through this process quickly enough to then have an architect start designing a home based on all of that information? You're welcome. Look, I'm right here.
No, I mean, I mean, it's a good question.
So I'm, I'm going to have to ask people to please maintain order because if you clap, so the problem is you all likely will support one another's comments and we all likely will support your comments too. But we really want to encourage not clapping or booing or, or, or speaking out because people might have different points of view. And so if you do that, even though it seems very supportive and kind, it makes it so that someone who has a different perspective is very unlikely to want to communicate it to us and we want to hear from all of you tonight. So if everybody can please maintain order, it would help us to facilitate the flow of the meeting. Chris, go ahead.
So, I mean, I think, yeah, you're, you're, you're right that the, the recovery navigator and this process is, it's, it's a fairly new process, right? And so there's going to be a learning curve, no doubt. But I think you're, you know, the, the community foundation and the donations that were made to the community foundation and Boulder County stepping up and contributing to that effort is, is just huge. I mean, that's, that's remarkable. And yes, the intent is that you can go to the resource navigator. They may, may not be able to answer your question, but they're going to find out where that resource is that can answer your question. That's, that's the idea behind it.
Councilmember, Councilmember Lay?
Can you hear me all right?
You sure can.
Okay, thanks. Chris, thanks for being with us tonight. I, you know, whenever I hear, I think, or I believe, or I intend, it's always a little bit of a challenge for us because I, I know you're, you're being honest. You're not entirely sure how everything is going to pan out. I wonder if you can tell us how, how soon we are likely to have the answers to the questions that people have raised tonight. Do you have a sense of when the, the geography is going to be clearer of the two programs you've outlined?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think the, you know, the, the resource navigators are scheduled for the end of July, I think July 25th. I think that's going to, that's going to be a, you know, a first step. And then the application process, there's still some work to be done, but I would suggest that in August at some point, the application process will be ready to go. And with funding then allocated or approved, probably September, late September, October.
Okay.
That, that would be a, a schedule and a, and, you know, it is a new program and so as we go along, we may, we may find some challenges, but we'll, we'll work through them together.
Yeah. And I, I think, we appreciate that you're putting everything you can into it. And I know there are a lot of people working on this. What I've heard, and I think a lot of us have heard similar comments, is that, you know, they're sort of trying to decide yesterday whether they can, whether they can take the risks that they're either being asked to or, or to take or, or they're considering taking. So the, I suppose getting an update on, on those dates would be helpful. Anything you can help us with as it goes forward, we'll, we'll appreciate because I think people are chomping at the bit for more information. The second question I had was that there was a mention in here about eligibility, and I can't remember which program it was for, which mentioned no opt outs on codes. And I guess I wanted to find out that, that went, came and went pretty quickly. What was that that you were referring to? And how would it, more importantly, apply to those folks in Williston who have or would planning to opt out of the 2021 net zero requirements of our IIEC code?
Yeah. So the, the intent of the, of the grant and loan program is that we, they would honor that, the property owners would honor the building code that's been approved and adopted and established. And so if someone elected to opt out, then that, they would not be eligible for those dollars.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I had a, I want to, you, you, your department provided a very helpful fact sheet, Chris, related to the disaster resilience rebuilding program. And I think to follow up on some of the, the questions that we've heard tonight, you described the resiliency program as the gap program. And in, on the fact sheet, it says that the, there's some potentially confusing language about supporting rebuilding in accordance with high performance building standards adopted by local communities and voluntary sustainable building elements that exceed local code requirements, including incorporation of fire resistant building materials and energy efficiency measures. So is it the, is it the purpose of that program to support, to support this, the, the sort of resiliency aspects, the fire resistant building materials, energy efficiency? Or is it, or is that, I was under the impression that based on what you said just a few moments ago, that that was the other program out of the Energy Office? Or are they both tied to those purposes?
So the, the fire, the fire mitigation is its own. Let's set that aside.
Okay.
But the electrification and the adoption of installing heat exchange pumps and the water heaters, the convection, convection ovens, that's where the 10,000 grant from this Colorado Energy Office.
Energy Office, okay.
Comes in.
Okay.
And those are consistent, I believe they're consistent with the 2021 Energy Code.
So the, so the DOLA program, the, the resiliency rebuilding is really about the gap?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Chris, and for your information tonight, and we look forward to continuing to work with you on that. And so next topic is our one year anniversary plans.
We're going to turn, oh yeah, we're going to turn this over to Director Nemec, who's, I believe, remote. And then Sharon, I'll bring up the slides.
Thank you.
We can hear you.
Oh, perfect, thank you, Mayor, members of council. So staff is starting to plan for the observance of the one year anniversary of the fire. We know that this can be a really difficult time for people and we want to be respectful of that. So we've done some research about this. And we've talked to mental health partners who suggested that most of the events around the one year anniversary should be community led events. We've also heard that there are some of these events already in the works. So we've also looked at what other cities have done who have been in similar circumstances, and it really varies widely. We've heard everything from a simple letter to the community, from elected officials. Some people do a small commemoration event or a small ceremony. Others do something to honor first responders. For some communities, it's an event like a tree planting or a community art project. So what communities done, what cities have done in the past really varies. As we move toward firming up our plans for the one year anniversary, we'll work with Superior and Boulder County to see if there are opportunities there for us to partner. We'll also collaborate with these community groups and individuals as those opportunities arise. And the other thing, we want to make sure that the city isn't stepping on toes or duplicating efforts. In addition to events and programs, we're going to strengthen access to mental health resources again around this time. We know from the phases of community trauma recovery that the one year anniversary can be, again, a really difficult time for people. So we feel that those resources may be important for some people who could use extra emotional support during this time of stress. So in your packet, you'll see, and up on the screen, there are some really preliminary plans for events that the city is thinking about. So what we'd like is some feedback on these proposed programs. And then any ideas you or the community might have about other ways that we can mark this important milestone.
Thank you, Sharon. Any questions on that from council members at this point? Councilmember Most.
Hi Sharon, thank you so much. Do we have a formal vehicle at this point for community members to provide suggestions, feedback, concerns about what we're planning?
No, we don't yet, Councilmember Most. It's a great question. We have talked about doing that though through several different avenues. So we'll look into doing that and make it really easy for community members to let us know what they need from us.
Great, thank you so much.
Councilmember Dickinson? Nothing? Any other questions or comments on this topic?
Mayor.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. My only suggestion, Director Nemec, would be that I think it's, and I, I really appreciate the approach that you're taking. Augmenting mental health resources. The sensitivity about not re-traumatizing members of our community. I think that, you know, marking this as a particularly somber event is, 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 is particularly important. And I'm sure that, I'm sure that we'll do a good job of that, but I would definitely make sure that the tone of our, of our. Commemoration, I should say, of the anniversary is, is a somber tone. And, and that, you know, for, because this community has been through a ton of trauma. So thank you for that and look forward to working with you to, to set the right tone and have the right events.
Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, I want to build on what Councilmember Brown just said. I. Having just celebrated 30th wedding anniversary, there is a certain connotation of anniversary, I guess, that maybe in my head is a little more celebratory. There's always celebration in the indomitable human spirit, right? But I think even searching for the right name for this will be useful. I like the term that, that Councilmember Brown used commemoration. But I, I guess what I would say is I'm not the right person to decide that. I think that the, the survivors will have good comments, I hope. And I hope that we, you know, we just make use of every. Every channel we can to get good information from them about the content, the character, the tone. All of that kind of stuff because that, just re-traumatization is a constant challenge for many. I, I'm sure many will sort of absent themselves from, from that because they'll be huddling with their families and, and so forth. But for those who partake, I, I hope we can do a really respectful. And kind of unifying sort of event. But it, it. I think you're a, a good person to be in charge of that and I really appreciate your working on that. And it, it helps to, to change your, you know, your, your title recently to. Direct, is it Director of Cultural Services? I mean, because there's, that is exactly where, what you're going to be doing in helping plan it. So thanks so much for, for taking this on, but thanks in advance for, for setting a good tone with, with folks as we build up to that one year after. Thanks.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. So we still have to have a council discussion so we can give direction on these topics, on information for staff to bring back. And we would like to have public input before we have council discussion. At eight o'clock, we typically take a quick break to refill our coffees. So since it's five minutes till, I think we should take the break now so we don't interrupt in the middle of public comment. So at 7:56, we'll be back at 8:01 to start public comment and then council discussion on this topic. We're going to get started in one minute. Just letting folks know, we're going to get started in one minute. All right, it's 8:01, let's get started, thanks, everyone. Please, if we could get order, we're getting the meeting started again. If people could please quiet down. So it's really important that we get, we want to make sure we get through everybody's comments and have a chance to hear everybody. So if people could settle back in, we're going to get started. So if you're here in person, if you could fill out a comment card, that way we make sure we get your name entered correctly in the record. And then folks online who would like to make a comment, please raise your hand, clicking the raise hand feature that you'll find at the bottom of your panel. Or if you've dialed in by phone, you can dial star six and we'll see a hand raised on your behalf. And so there's signup cards just right outside that you can fill out if you'd like to speak. And when you come up, please tell us your name and then what town you live in. And then you will have three minutes to tell us anything you'd like to tell us. And you can see the timers on the side. And the reason we have the timers is not really to cut people off, but just so we can get through all of the different people's comments that would like to say something. And not everybody likes to speak in that format, in this format, or, you know, speak publicly. And so all of our email addresses are online and we are getting a lot of email right now. So I know everybody on council reads all of the emails, even if we don't have time to respond to every single one. So first in the comment queue, we have Larry Donner.
How's that? I pushed the button. Good evening. My name is Larry Donner. I lost my home at 1020 Willow Place. As a friend and a neighbor, I am here tonight to ask for your help. Many of us attending this meeting have lost everything. Most would like to return to Louisville, but we are facing headwinds and obstacles we never imagined. December 30th, we scrambled to find a place to live, gather basic necessities, things like clothing, toiletries, transportation. After the initial phase, many of us discovered how unprincipled our insurance companies were and continue to be. The additional burden of new codes, the public shaming and public demification of fire victims. Add to an overwhelming feeling of fatigue, frustration, and abandonment. While staff has done a great job, the same cannot be said for council. We have been made to feel like a burden to the city of Louisville. Some have said we should quit whining because this disaster is going to make us a millionaire. Others have said permit fees and use taxes are no big deal because your insurance will pick them up. And in the end, we'll all be made whole by our savings on energy. Nothing can be further from the truth. I hope the majority of council is never forced to face the reality of a total disaster the way we have and Counselor Fahy has. I suggest a change in mindset. Rather than seeing Louisville fire victims as a nuisance and a burden. See us as an asset to the community. An asset you would like to maintain. You might even project a 20-year payback. Do the right thing. Stop pitting fire victims against non-victims. Just lower some of the hurdles, reduce the fees and taxes, and move to make Louisville truly one community as we attempt to recover and rebuild. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And just, so this is, this is the third reminder and we will start taking 10-minute breaks if we can't maintain decorum during comments. Because it's really important that we create an atmosphere where everyone feels welcome to make whatever comments they need to. So at the next outburst, we'll have to take a 10-minute recess. Next, we have Heather Sacks.
Thank you, it's Heather Zooks.
I apologize, Heather Zooks.
No, no problem. I hope my comments can be constructive because I know that you guys have all been working really hard for the last six months. I know many of you are putting in 24-hour workdays and, or at least it seems like that. So I want to start with thanking you for the time that you're putting in. You guys did not sign up for this when you took your positions and. I appreciate that. What, what it seems to be is that there's so many of us that are underinsured and I know you all know this, but. And I know that you guys are trying really hard to create systems to fill the gaps, but here's what's happening. All of the gaps have some sort of dependency on them, such as in order to get this grant, you need to build to the 2021 code. In order to do this, you need to electrify. In order to do that, you need to do this. In order to get this, your income needs to be less than that. But what's, what that is creating for us is. Uncertainty in what we can actually do financially. And where we are sitting right now is in order to actually get any of these fundings, we have to build to the 2021 code, which costs us $100,000 more. So not only am I $400,000 short to build my house, I now have to spend an extra $100,000 in order to get more funding. And I cannot afford to do that. So what, what these assistance programs are doing is. Not supporting the people who actually need the support. So I'd like to encourage you to think outside the box and try to find ways to reduce the fees. I know that the taxes may be set in certain ways and the permits may be set in certain ways. But what's happening is we all have 24 months to build our homes. We are now six months in. It takes 10 months to build a home or more. And if we are, if we can't come to conclusions, we're all going to be in very upset situations and much further in debt than we already are. So I'm going, I'm, I'm asking that you look at everything again, come to concrete conclusions and support us in ways that can actually work. And I'm more than happy to help figure that out. I really, really appreciate Caleb's comments on Order of Operations. Right now, I'm about to submit permits next week and as a single mom of two little girls and who also supports my mother and my ex-husband, I really, really need to nail down the finances. So anything you can do to make these navigators happen sooner, make the insurance specialists happen sooner.
Thank you for your comments. And City Clerk, when we do the online comments, if you can, if, I don't know if it's possible with our Zoom setup to run the timer on the online side so folks can see it there too. That would be helpful to folks online. Next, we have Tanya Swamaru. Next, we have Tanya Swamaru.
Hi. I just want to say, sorry, you've heard from me a lot. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for having this meeting. Okay, for us to sit down and deal with some fire business, this feels really good. And please, we have some more fire business, and a lot of it is kind of time-critical for a lot of us, things that have to do with funding or things that have to do with safety. So hopefully, this won't be the only meeting we have, special meeting, to deal with Marshall Fire Business. Hopefully, we can keep this dialogue. So I just want to say a few things about the use tax. I just want to talk about, my neighborhood, Cornerstone, was probably one of the smaller house neighborhoods that burned. And it had a really good mix of people who lived in it, nurses, teachers, electricians, people who work for the city, for the university of staff, you know, really middle-income people. And talk about what the use tax means. Could be, say you have a $25,000 use tax you have to pay. If you have to get a mortgage to pay that, it's 6.5%, that's $158 a month, every month, for 30 years. That's a lot of extra money for people. And I want to call out Maxine, Counselor Most, you're here, you're the only rep for Ward 2. Do you know how many homes in Ward 2 burned? 381. So 35% of the homes that burned in the Marshall Fire happened in Ward 2. That's 1 in 6 people are no longer home, and mostly their properties are erased. So I want to say, you know, if you favor a policy of having middle-income people in Louisville, a very big span of incomes and ages, then you want to bring the people who had to leave because of the fire back. If we don't come back, it's going to be a lot of people who are wealthier than the ones that left. And so, Maxine, I believe on your website, you spoke, for your, when you ran for council, I'm sorry, Counselor Most, you spoke about, about affordable housing and equity in Louisville. This is the number-one way to prioritize that. So please work hard to bring us back. And I also want to say that, among the fire survivors, there is no division between people who had 900-square-foot and 4,500-square-foot homes. We are all for one and one for all. Like, it doesn't matter if you were upper-middle-class. We all lost our homes, and we all want to come back, and just support us all equally. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Kate McCoy Cummings.
Good evening. Good evening. Kate McCoy Cummings, we lived at 977 Arapahoe Circle. We're the original homeowners of that land. My husband, Bill, is here with me tonight. I stand before you to appeal to your promise to the community that we would be inclusive and diverse. I'm really concerned, as a senior citizen, I just turned 69, and I feel that a lot of people just want us to leave. There's underlying talks about, well, you're retired now, you're going to leave anyway, or you probably have a second house, or you're going to be rich once you rebuild. I feel that a lot of people are thinking that's going to happen. There are a lot of seniors in Centennial Eight. And I'm worried that that's going to change our community. When we leave, a lot of people are now leaving because of the rules, the regs, the fees, and the general cost of the rebuild. It has been a nightmare to work through the SBA loan, to be told, you're eligible for FEMA, you're eligible for $240,000. And then they come back and say, well, you got an insurance payout. Now you're down to 72. You got another one. Now you're down to 56. Now we're going to give you $18,000. That's all you're going to get. We worked months, and that delayed our architect. It delayed our thoughts, can we stay? These fees that we're going to be forced with, the use fee, the permit fees, need to be taken away to help to keep us, not just seniors, but everyone, back here. We lost a house, but we lost our history. And if you didn't lose your house, you don't know what it's like. It's very, very painful. I have nothing left. I climbed all the 14ers. I have no documentation of that. I saw thousands of bands, different venues, dates. I had journals, one journal in particular. I had every band I've ever seen. That breaks my heart, that I don't have that. Our history is gone, and our joy is gone. It's summer. We used to dance in the garden, under the stars, play Ticket to Ride board games by candlelight, and sit on our front porch during rainstorms. That joy is gone. I want to stay in my community. I want my neighbors back. I want the kids playing in the street. I want to talk to people over our fences. Please, take away our permit fees and our use fee. Please help us. We need money. You have a reserve. It's a foreign emergency. The city has it. Please use some of that to help us. Thank you.
Thank you. And then if I could just ask people to check if their microphones are on, we're getting some feedback. And so if you're online, if you could please mute yourself, and if you're up or have a microphone somewhere, if you could please just make sure it's off so that we can hear people clearly when they're testifying. Next, we have Janine and Paul.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Janine Fugere, and my husband, Paul, and I lived for the past seven years together at 430 Owl Drive in Wildflower Condominium Association, and I've been living there for 20 years. And I'm here not only as an individual who lost my home, but also as a representative, participate in the Marshall Together Group, and I'm a neighborhood liaison for the Wildflower Condominium Association, who is one of the hardest-hit groups affected by this, and it's very similar to what Tanya has spoken of because our unique circumstance of being a condominium association has put so many hurdles in the way of our HOA board and in the way of our property management company. Our permitting process is so complex, our, everything process is so complex because we're not individuals applying for these things. We're not individuals building a home. But what I want to come back to is, Wildflower Condominium Association has been a part of the community as a place that people like me, who was a single mom, raising a son with autism, who temporarily gave up a photography career to help other children, got a special ed degree, and purposely targeted Louisville, Colorado, as the town I wanted to live in. And I lived there, and I've helped people for countless years. I recently became a retired teacher, and I was out of the country at the time that the fire happened. And this has been agonizing for me and for my husband, Paul, because our home is gone. And everything that we're hearing implies there's likely going to be no possible chance that we can afford to rebuild. The homeowners' association is severely underinsured. We, as individuals, were underinsured because we lacked understanding of how underinsured the HOA was. We've been told there would be so many different grants and programs available to us, but they all don't apply because Wildflower, among others, have been given a, a, whatever it is, a waiver of the new energy code. So take that grant off the table. At the bottom line is, I'm not going to be able to afford to move home to the home that I love. I'm living in a foreign country that's in the middle of civil unrest. I can't come back because I have nowhere to go. I am appealing that at the upcoming budget meeting, sources like sales tax increase, service cuts in other areas, across-the-board property tax increases, because 550 of us, many of us who have extremely modest means, cannot possibly bear the costs of the rebuild of the city of Louisville. If we do, we can no longer be residents of the city of Louisville, and that would absolutely break mine and Paul's hearts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Katie Burns.
Thank you. I'm Katie Burns. Our home was in the Enclave, 1111 West Enclave Circle. We lost our home. We lost our business, all of our business inventory. We also lost a portion of our retirement that was in physical assets. Back in 1986, when we built our home, we paid for a permit, which we paid for all the permit fees that went to the rec center and the historical, I can't read my writing, that, all the various different funds that the money goes to. And now that we're in the position of having to rebuild, we're underinsured, we're insured about 65%. I'm going to have to personally pull about $500,000 out of our retirement to build our home. And part of that is going towards paying for these permit fees a second time. So basically be in taxed a second time for all of the various different funds the money goes to. Yeah, I, I did calculate, based upon ours, our permit fee was $43,000. And so that, that's a big chunk of my retirement that I had to pull out to pay for my permit fee. And I toned that down. I multiplied it times the 550 homes. That's an $11 million windfall on taxes. And then if you take the permit fees, it's about an $8 million windfall. I understand there are assets that have been hired that need to be paid for out of part of the fees. And so not all of that can be refunded, but a big portion of that can. Now, with that being said, one thing that went very, very well, giving kudos to Lisa and her team, our permit did go through, and went through in about five weeks, and it was a fairly easy process. We are building. But again, we don't know, every, every aspect of our program, we're finding roadblocks. We're finding costs that we didn't anticipate. So hopefully, we can build it in what we think our budget is, and only have to pull $500,000 out of our retirement. So please, take that taxation off of us and help us out a little bit in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David H.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I just, first of all, just, David House, 949 Larchburg Lane. Thank you for your time. I know tensions can be a little high sometimes. With some of us, we're just tired and frustrated. So I just thank you that you guys are continuing to listen. I, we do appreciate that. To keep it short, I'll get right to it. We're here to talk about some sort of rebate for the use tax. This is just one idea of mine, is that we pay the permit fees as normal, and then after the permit's been accepted, then we get reimbursed by the reserve fund. The point of the reserve fund is to pay for events like this fire, you know, to help the citizens out. And if this fire isn't big enough for that, then, and I don't know what would be big enough. According to the June 13 Finance Committee documentation, FEMA is paying 75% to 90% of all the utility system damage. The estimated impact in that documentation for Louisville is said to be 7.8 million, but only the 6.15 million of the PPDR portion was actually going to be paid by Louisville. The rest was going to be covered by FEMA. Maybe I'm wrong in reading that documentation. That's what I saw. So the 615 number, the 6.15 number, is an old number because not everybody has done the PPDR that we thought was going to do it. So the new estimate was roughly around $3 million. So that would mean there is a little over $3 million that was budgeted for the PPDR that's not going to be needed. That would be, I think, perfect and enough to reimburse for the use tax. I was recently told by a councilperson that the reserve had been decimated, but since Louisville hadn't spent any money on the PPDR yet, I'm, I guess I'm just curious as to what happened to the $12.2 million that were there, like what it was spent on. But I guess in the end, it doesn't really matter because we have the extra PPDR money that was budgeted for. I personally, maybe others don't agree, would be willing to compromise, maybe pay a flat fee of $1,000 bucks for the use tax or something, and then the rest would get reimbursed. That would generate probably still, if everybody did it, like $500,000 for the use tax stuff if that's needed. This is just one solution. I'm sure there's others. I just encourage you guys to come up with a solution. We all, all we want is to live in a house again, in the city that we want to live in. And you guys can help with that. And then as an aside, real quick, the state grant stuff, I, I thought I heard he said he was going to use a software program to calculate the rebuilding cost. That makes me really nervous. I hope it's not exactimate because it stinks. That's what the insurance company and SBA does, and they're way lowballed. So if you can back that up, if you are going to use a software program with actual local contractor estimates, like, you know, what we're actually going to be paying to rebuild the house, that would be great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cindy White.
Good evening. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. I also appreciate all the work that folks are doing on our behalf. I want to echo much of what I've heard tonight. The costs of rebuilding are significant. We are underinsured. That money will need to come either from loans or from retirement. Those are real hardships for our family, and while the programs that have been described are useful and important, it's not clear at all that we will qualify for them. People's response to Councilman Dickinson's response, statements was really about a sense that finally someone recognizes the amount of difficulty and uncertainty that we are facing and is seeking to acknowledge the way that's impacting our inability to rebuild. Now is the time to do the right thing. It's difficult. I work for a large bureaucracy in an administrative position. It's easy to say we can't, or it's complicated, or the situation will be unfair to someone else in some kind of complicated future circumstance. But when crises happen, one of the things we try to do as organizations is step up and do what's right and best for people. We seek to do the right thing that will help people and that will make our community whole. In this case, that's addressing the permit and the use tax in ways that help us rebuild. That may be a rebate. It may be a reduction of permit fees. I don't propose that I have the exact solution, but you all do. You have the resources and the staff and the information to make a good decision and to help folks. $10,000 or $20,000 borrowed at this point on a construction load will cost us an extra $10,000 in, in interest and other sorts of things. It's real money. We are not all building million-dollar homes. We're seeking to build a very modest home. Our home was less than 2,000 square feet. We expect to build something like that. We want to be back in it. We need your help, and we ask you at this point to work on Thursday to make a good decision and to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Martha Parks.
My name is Martha Parks, a third-generation Coloradan, a Boulder County resident since 1983, and Louisville resident since 1996. We lost our home at 928 Arapahoe Court, and I'm here to ask you for help to allow us to rebuild and return to a town that we love. I was told in the last month or so that the, by a city council member, that Louisville has a $12 million surplus. That cushion will grow as permits are pulled, way beyond the cost of personnel to review permits and perform inspections. There are county and FEMA funds available, and the cleanup will cost less than originally anticipated. Therefore, you do have a surplus. There are many ways to eat, to ease the use tax burden, and many ideas have been sent to you already. and many ideas have been sent to you already. Please don't just collect and keep this use tax just because it's legal to do so. I hope that you'll give serious consideration to the ideas that have been offered. You don't have to reinvent the wheel on how to ease the burden for us. Your website says that you are committed to having us come home as quickly as possible. I hope it's not just a platitude. This is an opportunity to step up to the plate and build a legacy of compassion, of empathy, and to really make us a community that's all in this together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Frost Yarnell.
Hello, and I'll take this thing off. Thank you so much for having us speak, and I'm just really glad I'm not up there. So I wanted to speak on all, on three topics, C, D, and E. So first, the use tax and fees. The definition of use tax on one of the documents that are on the city's website says it's building materials. Use tax applies to the privilege of using or consuming within the city construction and building materials for use in connection with residential, commercial, or industrial building projects. It is a privilege to be here, but it is not a privilege to be rebuilding something that we lost. We did not decide to come from somewhere else into Louisville and have that privilege of building a new home. That's not what we're doing. So it doesn't, it doesn't even fit the spirit of what the use tax is identified as. Additionally, it's there because construction places a burden on maintaining streets, police protection, parks, and rec usage. That is also in that same document. This also doesn't apply because we all lived here. We already used the police. We already used the infrastructure. We already used the recreational services. None of those are new. And in fact, for a period of time, it's going to be less because so many of us aren't even here. So, so I feel like the use tax is not even something that should be considered applicable in this situation. I also don't quite understand how the use tax is bonded against because it was unexpected revenue. So how it could, how something that didn't exist could already be bonded against is confusing to me. So that's all I wanted to say about that, I think. About the D, resources. I agree about the question of how, how is it going to be determined what the valuation is of building? Because again, I echo the person that said that that's a scary idea using some kind of an algorithm because all of the algorithms that we've had have been so far out of, out of reality. I also don't know quite what insurance means, whether it's structure only, whether it's extended, extended coverage, whether it's other structures, whether it's, you know, where, where that limit is when they're talking about the gap. And then lastly, for anniversary plan, I'd like to throw out just remembering the pets that were lost in some way. Thank you.
Thank you. And Frost was a former councilperson from Ward 2. So thank you for your service, Councilmember Yarnell. And so I think it's only appropriate to follow that up with Councilmember Lou.
My name is Susan Lou. I lived at 1020 Willow Place. We came to Louisville 30 years ago. I served on Louisville's planning commission and city council, 16 years of service. My husband, Larry Donner, served 43 years in the fire service and was Boulder's fire chief for 24 years. We know government. We know politics. We know government budgets are fungible. I want to share some very personal details of our life to help you understand how individuals in this disaster have no common thread except that we've lost everything. Larry and I are retired and living off our savings. It surprises people to know that Larry and I do not have government pensions. Larry doesn't even qualify for social security. We pay ourselves monthly by cashing out a bit of our savings every month. It was fine when the economy was healthy. Now it's downright scary. The increase in the value of our home of 30 years was a substantial part of our nest egg. It is gone forever unless we rebuild. Because of our savings, we have found we do not qualify for any assistance. We were not underinsured. However, it is one thing to have adequate coverage. It is another thing to collect, especially if you have State Farm. Because of the huge variety and survivor's circumstances, I favor an across-the-board, no strings attached rebate. Your proposal to put a general property tax on the ballot is a cynical attempt to divide and conquer. You know it will not pass, and it's a stupid idea. The truth is, some segment of our community always subsidizes another. Until now, no one has ever begrudged a fellow resident a larger share of the pie. Caleb, how much historic preservation money is in your house? Ashley, why does the public landscaping always look great in your neighborhood? Dennis, how much do you benefit from golf course maintenance? Kyle and Max might be the only ones not getting a bigger share. Maybe that is why Max is so mean. The ugly truth is, Ward 2, where the bulk of the fire damage happened, has always subsidized Wards 1 and 3 and never complained about it. So government budgets are fungible. You can do this. Superior already has. Stop with the excuses and just do it across the board.
Thank you, Councilmember, the former Councilmember Lou. Next, we have Deb Harrison. Maybe it says Kit Harrison? All right, I think maybe Kit or Deb left. I'll come back and see if they just left the room for a minute. Mandy Mayfield?
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Mandy Mayfield, and I used to live at 101 Cherrywood Lane. It's difficult to summarize 17 years in three minutes, so I'll try to hit the highlights. In 1994, all I knew about Louisville was that it was a bus stop between Denver and Boulder. When I first moved to Denver, I knew two people. I had two suitcases, an engineering degree, a few credit cards, and no job, no car, and no safety net. I grew up in poverty in West Virginia. Government cheese, low poverty. I also have a poor sense of direction. So that's how I ended up stranded in the bus stop in Louisville, waiting an hour for the next bus to Boulder. Little did I know back then that Louisville would come to mean so much more to me. In 2005, I got married and moved into our home with my stepchildren in the cul-de-sac on North Cherrywood Lane. At the time, my husband Doug and I would joke about the arboretum and wonder if the trees would make it through the winter. We walked my dog Rex, a chocolate lab, in the arboretum almost every night and rarely encountered another person. In 2010, our twin boys were born, and we brought them home from the hospital to Cherrywood Lane. At the time, there were very few young children in the neighborhood, and they were the youngest for many years. Then a curious thing happened. The neighborhood turned over. Many new families with young children moved in. Summer nights were filled with a low rumble of conversation mixed with the joyful squeals of children playing. During the school year, a crowd of children would walk to fireside elementary together. Our twins were now among the oldest in the pack. As our social circle expanded, our roots grew deeper, much like the trees in the arboretum. In 2016, we refinanced and pulled money out to remodel our home. We installed hardy board exterior and finished our basement so that our older children would have a place to stay when they visit. We paid hefty taxes and use fees on adding a bedroom and a bathroom into the basement. In 2020, we got our boys their first dog Lucky. Lucky was a golden retriever. He enjoyed interacting with the many people in the arboretum who stopped by and petted him over our back fence. May he rest in peace. Some people are under the misconception that insurance will pay for everything and that those of us who lost our homes will end up better off than we were before. With new houses, that could not be farther from the truth. According to a study by the Department of Insurance, 92% of the Marshall Fire survivors are underinsured. What that means is that in order to rebuild, we have to take out new loans, pull from savings accounts, 401K, and in some cases, our children's college funds. This is particularly devastating for someone like me who grew up in poverty and worked incredibly hard to gain some measure of financial stability of those lost in a single event.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Audrey DeBarros.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council, and interim City Manager Davis. My name is Audrey DeBarros. I lived at 839 West Mulberry Street in Louisville, and I'm here tonight to ask for your support to reduce the use tax and building permit fees charged to fire victims. My family of four is currently renting a house in Superior. We are currently planning to rebuild on our lot in Louisville. We have retained a builder, and we are working with an architect. We hope to come through the permitting process and under construction later this fall so that we can complete the construction within the two-year additional living expenses threshold that our State Farm insurance policy requires us to. We did participate in the Boulder County debris removal. We are waiting for final completion of that. We're one of those situations where things are lingering a little bit too long. While we are still a ways out from having a firm cost estimate for our, from our builder, we are currently estimating, or they are estimating, a cost of $335 per square foot for above ground based upon other estimates that they've gotten, had gotten for other clients of theirs. We are underinsured. The State Farm coverage to rebuild our home will only pay for a little more than half of the cost to reconstruct our home, replace the fence and landscaping, landscaping. Of course, this is leaving us with hard decisions to make up the difference of hundreds of thousands of dollars. Every dollar saved matters to affirm our ability to afford to move back to Louisville. We need your, we need certainty and urgency to fund the reconstruction of our home as soon as possible. There have been promises and commitments of support. We've heard a lot of them here tonight, and it's been great to get updated information about Senate Bill 206. The Community Foundation and the promise to have the Recovery Navigators, the promise of additional funding, the promises, promises. Nothing gets going. So far, our family has received no support from the foundation other than the initial contribution. The rebates and incentives for green building may be great in the long run, but in the short term, it's really expensive. I'm not sure how much we're going to be able to do. We have received little to no direct financial support from this national disaster. We really need your help. You are our first line of defense in this disaster recovery, and we need you to act soon. We need certainty so that we can build for, move forward as quickly as possible and come back to the community. One idea is to tie the reduction in the fees and the use tax to the level of insurance. We do not have coverage, but some people do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Darren McKean.
Hi, my name is Darren McKean, and I lived at 911 Eldorado Lane in the Cornerstone neighborhood. And like so many other families, we lost our home, our car, and all of our possessions in the Marshall Fire. My wife and I have lived in Louisville for 22 years, and we've raised our two daughters here. And regarding the use tax, I'm asking that you not tax the materials that we need to rebuild our homes. And to be clear, I'm not asking the city to pay for our rebuilds. We just need to get back on our feet again like it was before the fire. None of this, the fire, the emergency system failing, our houses burning down, none of this was our fault. Yet, before we can get back into having a house on our properties again, we need to pay taxes for the materials, even though none of this was our fault. And it feels like you don't have our backs on this. So the use tax you require will significantly increase the financial burden for us, which means we'll have to dig into more retirement funds to rebuild our homes. And what's even more difficult is that next month, our girls are going to be in college at the same time. And as it stands, we'll have to use money that we've allocated for their college fund to cover our underinsurance amounts. And our girls will have to take out more student loans when that wasn't really part of our original plan. So this extra use tax expense will certainly no doubt affect our ability to support our daughters. So since the fire, the struggle, I mean, it's really been financially, emotionally. It's been real, and it's been incredibly difficult for us, all of us. And of the hundreds of people who reached out to us on how they could help, I repeatedly said, we just need an easy button just to make things easier because really nothing has been easy for us from the start. And when we refinanced in 2020, our insurance covered us at $140 a square foot. And now we're expected to pay at least $325 a square foot to rebuild a house that's going to be smaller than the, than the one that we had on before. What I don't understand is why the city didn't plan or expect to receive money from the use tax anyway. Why are we the ones who really took a beating this year? Why are we on the hook for this? We didn't plan on any of this either. So our road to recover is, is a long journey. And all we ask is that you find solutions that will help us, not penalize us. And unlike the council, we're not doing a budget retreat this week because we have no idea what our final costs are going to be, nor do we know what our final insurance disbursements are going to be. So it's at this point in the game, none, none of what we can afford to, like, right now, we can't afford to make any mistakes. So which is why I'm asking to not just listen to our stories, but please stand with us. Do the right thing and give us an easy button. We need your help right now.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Charlotte Buck.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and neighbors. My name is Charlotte Buck. In 2004, I purchased my wonderful home on Larkspur Lane. I am retired. My monthly fixed income would horrify most of you, but I do not live beyond my means. My car is 26 years old, and my other transportation mode was my beloved 25-year-old bicycle. My biggest splurges were on my home. My home was in tip-top condition. All of my neighbors on Larkspur Lane are coming back. I don't want to be the empty lot. It's where I want to continue to live. Cornerstone isn't just an address or a subdivision. It is a community of friends, families, dogs, trees, gardens, Buster the squirrel, may he rest in peace, the birds at my bird feeder. I considered myself absolutely blessed to live in Cornerstone, truly my corner of the world. It will be a challenge for me to rebuild. I don't know how much, if any, my portions of donation money, rebates, grants, big unknowns. What I'm afraid of is that I won't have enough. A loan of any type would seriously reduce the monthly, monthly amount I have to live on. I do not have the financial security that I did have. However, I still have to jump off this financial cliff in order to continue to live in Louisville. I know I speak for all of us when I say that we appreciate all of the benefits you have found for us, the deals on heat pumps and solar gardens, allowing us to opt out of the 2021 IECC and so forth. But the use tax could cancel those benefits out, and we would end up basically breaking even. even. All of the other resources out there for us are going to be means-tested, meaning we have to prove we are underinsured. Are you kidding? Look at the cost of everything these days and the bottom line of the insurance companies who sabotaged us. All of us who are rebuilding have hope for a brighter future. Wouldn't it be great for the city to have a whole bunch, possibly up to five hundred, sustainable, energy-efficient, fireproof homes? That is your vision for the city, and we are trying to be a part of your vision. We have a great opportunity ahead of us. Thank you. And by the way, is there a way to certify what Maxine Most said, that the general fund is decimated?
Thank you. Next comment we have is from John Barrett.
Hello, my name is John Barrett. I'm here with my wife Carol. We lived at one, one-zero Cherrywood Lane. We moved to Lewisville in nineteen-eighty-three. We raised our children here, Lisa and Kevin. They went to Fireside Elementary. Now they're grown up and have children of their own. We moved to the Cherrywood Two subdivision in nineteen-ninety-one. We were the original owners of, of that home. During some of that period that we lived there, I served as Associate Judge of the Municipal Court here in the city of Lewisville. I was quite honored to, to do so. We now live in Westminster. We'd rather live in Lewisville. We're trying to rebuild. We have a letter of intent with Boulder Creek, a local builder. We have heard some people say, members of this council, that the city needs the money. If that is so, it should be a common burden, a burden shared by the entire city. It should not be foisted solely on the fire survivors. In this context, the use tax has become an abuse tax, and I ask that you not continue that abuse. I see signs put up by the city that frankly infuriate me every time I see it. Why? Because it says, "Together, we will recover and rebuild." But it feels like we are alone. And the reason it feels that way is because we are alone. But you could change that. You could bring us together. You could help us recover. You could help us rebuild. Please do so. Thank you.
Thank you. And I didn't know you were the Honorable Judge, or I would have recognized you that way. Thank you very much, Judge. And next, we have Sherri Summer.
Good evening, Sherri Summer, nine-ten South Palisade Court. I just want to go back to the beginning of the presentation. They talked about reimbursable costs, and the one reimbursable cost I remember was the incidental damages to roads. I'd like to know more about, this is more of a question than a, than a statement. I'd like to know what other costs are reimbursable that have been related to the Marshall Fire. There will probably be incidental damage due to rebuilding, because there'll be a lot of materials and large trucks coming through town. Will that be reimbursable? There was a representative who said, from the county, who said that their planning staff has devoted all their time, or nearly all their time, to the fire, and that, I think Lisa might have said that they're going to calculate the amount of planning staff time that has been used towards the fire in order to, you know, show how much work has been done. Will any of that planning staff time be reimbursable for our city? There's additional staff that's been hired, other damaged infrastructure, I think that was spoken of, something like seventy-three percent will be reimbursable. In any case, I just wanted to bring this up, because if these additional costs are not reimbursable, what will the budget impact be? I guess you'll be having this budget retreat to determine. I guess you could have budget cuts or additional taxes. Will those, if there's an additional tax, I assume that will have to be voted on. I'd also just like to know if there was a list somewhere where we could see all of the non-reimbursable costs and their impact on the budget. That must be somewhere. I just don't know where it is. Then I want to go to the use tax, just more of a procedural question. So I understand that you can't change, you can't just stop charging the use tax, because that was voted by taxpayers. So that would require an election, but there is that, that other option of drawing money from the general fund. And I just have a question. I guess the city attorney would have to answer this. It seems a little bit like that's sort of like a tax increase. I don't know if it is, but I just would like to know what the city attorney's take is on that. Thank you very much. It was mostly questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Maria McClure.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I have written a letter, and Kyle and Maxine, you responded to it. Thank you for that. I have so many things to say, I don't know where to begin. I was feeling so deflated just a few moments ago, but listening to my fellow fire survivors and my neighbors uplifts me. They, we have kept each other going. I completely echo what, what Sue Lou says. I know you guys, if you have the will, you have the way, you have the most talented city staff ever. That you don't know, Cameron's name is shameful, shameful. This man is amazing. He was at my home, capping my utilities right after the fire, talking to me about my gas and that my home wouldn't explode. You should know his name. There are so many people here on staff that are talented. If you want something done, they can craft the language. They will craft the language. I know you can. My daughter was on YAB. You know, she was involved in passing the Rec Center and the Senior Center bond, thirty million dollars. That got passed. You can change things if you want to. Saying that you can't just means you don't want to. Just own it at least. Have the courage to be honest that you don't want to do it. Say that at least, please. Maxine, you telling us that, that you want to, like, actually take equity in our homes? That's crazy, absolutely outrageous. What is going on here? Where are you guys? There is more staff here than city council people. You are not here for us. This is the greatest disappointment ever. Kyle, you came to our rally. Chris Lay, you have come too. But you guys do not represent us. You are not standing up for us. What we are going through is crazy. I do not wish this on anyone, anyone. It is the craziest thing ever. I feel like we're on a never-ending episode of Lost. You know, we, we worked hard, we have put everything into our homes. I, I sent you my letter. I told you my details, right? My home is my own, my biggest asset, my retirement plan. I don't have accounts to, to put, to pay. I have one account, and even if I cleaned that account out, I have rates, a Roth priority, thirty percent off the top, and it still doesn't pay the use tax, and it still doesn't pay the fees. You can do this. You can do this, right? There, there are ways we can shake things loose, but you have to have the will, and you have to represent us. And if you don't, we will find somebody else that will. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeff McGonigal.
Hi, my name is Jeff McGonigal. I lived at nine-seventy Arapahoe Circle. Been there twenty-six years. It's been two-hundred-and-one days since the fire happened. I would describe that as two-hundred-and-one days of fatigue and emotional turmoil. My wife Liz has taught school here for twenty-six years, and both my daughters were born here. Our roots run deep, and we'd like to remain. I'd like the acknowledgement tonight that the rebate and grant programs are, are options for eliminating or reducing the use tax. I did not know that was an option. I think staff and council is working towards solutions. I hope you continue to do that at your budgetary retreat. When you're weighing all the budgetary items, and unless the fire victims are last on that list, I believe there's some things we can do and that you can do to help us out with the use tax. In particular, use tax, this was never the intent that five-hundred-and-fifty homes would be paying this type of use tax to, to get their homes rebuilt, when this was just a random haphazard fire. That had it started in the middle of town, we'd be talking about a whole different group of people. I'm asking for your help. You've been very helpful, though contentious at times with many of us, but it's been helpful so far. I hope that continues. My last comment is, there was a statement made by a member of this council that, how do I benefit if you rebuild? And I would like to hope that we're a city that will show the compassion, love, and kindness that many of my neighbors and fellow neighbors have shown me and family, so we choose between love, kindness, and empathy, or how do I benefit if you guys rebuild? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Russ Moore.
Hi, my name is Russ Moore. I lived at ten-thirteen Arapahoe Circle, and I'm here with my wife Stacy. I just want to echo most of everything that folks said today. And if there's a will, there's a way with this use tax thing. The assumptions when the original use tax was passed in 2015 are completely different now. I'll try to use a quick analogy. I work in the big bureaucracy that Dr. White talked about. And when the pandemic hit the university, had we adhered to all our rules and regulations and some of the regent laws that existed, the university would have collapsed. But now times are different. I think the use tax was predicated on the assumption that there would be double-digit numbers of permits and use fees paid every year, but all of a sudden, now we have hundreds of them, right? And forty percent of those are going to be new builds, so I think use taxes would be appropriate there. And you can do the math, but it'd be millions of bucks on that forty percent of houses that are going to be rebuilt in Superior. The other point I want to make, and I really want to acknowledge council members Brown and Dickinson and perhaps others who acknowledge the problem with uncertainty. To date, we have promises, and I appreciate the efforts that people are putting into the rebates and et cetera. We don't know if they'll come to pass. Nothing's come to pass yet. Nonetheless, many of us who have decided to rebuild, we've jumped off that financial cliff, and we're the ones taking the risk. We're hoping that a lot of these rebates come through, but I'm feeling like the bar keeps moving, and a lot of the rebates and programs are actually forcing us to pay more money upfront. Some folks can do it, other folks can't, and that's why the number of forty percent people who aren't going to rebuild is likely to grow. And if we look at what's happening nationally at similar disasters, that, that would be the case. So I'm asking the city council, take some risks. The situation is different, and you can really help us out by mitigating these use fees. Many of us have tried to remodel and modernize our homes and make them more efficient through renovations. Ironically, we finished a renovation the morning of the fire, and so we paid all the permit fees and all that kind of stuff. And we want to do it again, because we love this city, we love this town, it's a community. I hope we can get that feeling of a coherent community. And just once again, you can do this. Please do the right thing and help us. We need your help. And I do want to give the tip of, tip of the hat to, to city staff. You guys are rock stars, and thanks for everything. You've been incredibly responsive, and let's all try to lean into this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Hughes.
Hi, my name is Mark Hughes. I'm a past and future resident of nine-fifty-three Eldorado Lane. Lived there with my wife and our two kids, who are fifteen and, and eleven. And, you know, it's, I apologize. I, I had a lot of things to say, and, you know, I, I wanted to come in with anger, but, you know, I, I can't be angry. I love this community so much. And I think that the council, the mayor, everybody, the staff has just done generally a really great job of trying to respond to our needs. And, you know, I couldn't be prouder to be a part of a community like this. Everybody here, we moved, my wife and I went to school, we met in Iowa, and the first time that we came to Lewisville, it felt like a little town in Iowa that we wanted to live in. And the bonus was, it's in Colorado, which is a little better than Iowa. And, you know, we were just so proud to be able to move here. It was, it was the place where we always come with our kids. We've been here for ten years now, and we just loved our neighborhood from the first minute we were there. We met so many people, it was just such a nice community. And, you know, I think it still is. And, you know, we are hurting deeply. I, I can't tell you how much sleep I have lost and just, you know, I, I hit the zombie mode by about eight-thirty at night, every night, and I just, I, I don't know, I don't even know what I'm saying right now. But the bottom line is, this is, it's a big deal to just save on something simple like use tax. It doesn't seem like a lot, fifteen thousand dollars on a million-dollar rebuild. All of these little costs add up, and I really think we have the power to do something about it. I think it's, like I've heard said, to see this one Lewisville sign outside, if we are charging a use tax to us, it feels like a fire victim tax, and I think we need to find a way to make that one Lewisville slogan actually true. Find a way to give us back that money. If, if there's a legal way to do it, if we have to pay it and get a rebate, great. The bottom line is, is I don't want to be means-tested for it. It's insulting to think that I have to prove again. All of these programs, to have to means-test is, it's exhausting. I just want help without any strings attached. Just, please rebate the money. I'm happy to pay the, the building fees, the permit fees, all of that. I understand that those have to be done. If you could reduce them a little bit, great, but just please help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Howe.
Hello, my name is David Howe. We, my family moved here to Lewisville in nineteen-seventy-nine, built on dirt, Mesa Point, and then in nineteen-ninety-nine, moved to eleven-oh-nine West Enclave, where we've been I, I won't even attempt to tell these emotional stories that you've heard tonight, except to say that, we, summary, we raised six children in Lewisville. And we just got to the point where we were settled. I'm asking that we cancel completely the use tax. It's a burden on us as fire victims. The use tax originally was intended for new builds, new developers, and there's no question that it's appropriate to that. But these are extenuating circumstances. None of us are associated with new developments and new builds. We are trying to rebuild what we had. The loss is just staggering. So I'm asking a cancellation of the use tax. Its appropriateness is, is not in this case. We're not new builds. We are, we are subjects of a natural disaster. Beyond that, I'm not a fan of rebates, only because it's like getting a high price for one thing and then getting a discount coupon for it. I would just assume, let's go with the chase, let's get the amounts that are relevant to, to our unique loss. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rebecca Wayland.
Thanks for the, the time. I want to first start off with a one-year anniversary, just for perspective, from a fire victim, at least my personal perspective. I would prefer resources and your time to be dedicated to getting us back on our feet. So I just say, from your pers, from, from the time and money that you spend on it, I would prefer it to be spent helping us get on our feet. So a community-led effort on that, I think it would be appropriate. In terms of the use tax, I'm not, or the use fees, I'm not going to spend a lot of time. I feel like other community members have spoken much more eloquently than I could about it, but I do just want to reiterate that means-testing is incredibly challenging. Just... Just, I appreciate the fact that it's going to take time for you to figure it out. Hopefully, you can do it quickly. Understand there might be factors that we're not privy to. But I stand by what some other community members have said, that you guys are smart, you have the will, and you have the way. Hopefully, you can get that done. I want to talk a little bit about the collateral damage that people probably, who haven't gone through this, might, some of the community members have spoke about. But we've stopped saving for our children's college. This is going to go on. This is going to have such an effect on generations of people. And I really hope you consider that. We are all privileged. If you're in this room right now, you're privileged. I think we should just take off the table, how privileged are you? Get rid of the means test, because we don't qualify for anything what the Colorado... What Polis has just rolled out. I had the same questions about the software calculations, but we don't plan to build to 2021 because we're trying to save money so we can just build a house, so we want to opt out. Well, that just takes all the money off the table. And then the grants, we don't qualify. And I would say the majority of us don't qualify for grant money. So just, I'd like to give you a sense of the fact that we are really, really struggling. My husband is having health issues. We've had to pay tons of fees just on his testing because, heart, the stress level, every one of us has a health story. Whether it's teeth rotting because the stress that we're going through, or the other things that are health-related, mental, I mean, we could go on and on about that. So we talk about trauma. The word trauma has been kind of thrown around. Like, it's not just the incident. The trauma is going to continue for many years to come. So just think the big picture when you're making this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Trevor Ackerman.
Hi, council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Trevor Ackerman. I lived at 915 El Dorado Lane in the Cornerstone neighborhood. And I want to just add my way to the notion about how... I feel like we were asked back in January, how can we help? Reach out, tell us what we can do. And at that time, we weren't sure. This was new to us. We didn't know what was coming. We really know now. And I think today, what we need is dollars and cents, no strings attached. Not only for the use tax. How it's achieved that we would get a rebate, or if there was no use tax, doesn't really matter to us. We don't want to have to think about it. We're tired of thinking about these things all the damn time. I need another web form like I need a hole in my head. I would encourage everybody on city council to, as the gentleman said earlier, to take risk. In the name of kindness and name of generosity, be willing to make mistakes. Stand up for us. When you talk to the state government, please encourage them. Take the strings off. We don't need that. $50,000 is not that much towards our rebuild if you think about the costs that these people are going to be burdened with. So, yes, please help. Thank you for the work that you have done. Thank you for letting us know that you are thinking of ways to help us. And people, make mistakes. Make us one. Thanks.
Thank you. That's all the sign-up cards we have for tonight. Were there any other folks online or in the audience that wanted to say something? All right. Seeing none, we'll turn it over to council members for discussion on this topic. I want to just start out by thanking everybody for taking the time to come in. We had a lot of really great comments from folks tonight, and a lot of really great written comments that we got in by email. And I'll just reiterate that, you know, we are getting a really high volume of email in the last, actually, several years. And so even though not every email necessarily gets responded to, I know every council member's reading them all. And so that is really helpful in our discussion process to get feedback and to loop back. And then I just want to extend thanks to staff for the information for tonight and the outside staff. It looks like we've lost the other agencies. But I'd like to thank the state and the county for coming tonight to help us with the information and presentation. It's really helpful. And as council knows, I usually go to council first, so I will let everybody frame the conversation. But I do just want to kind of set the tone for the conversation. And, you know, the internet is a funny thing. It's really great for sharing information and like free expression of ideas. And when you think about it as like an exchange, that's really fantastic. But it also is, oftentimes, becomes a way to cause distress and fear. And so I just would set the tone in this conversation with council to try to help clear the air on some of the misperceptions that have been spread through the internet in the last several days and really talk about, you know, at Finance Committee yesterday, I heard from council members all talking about working on ways to alleviate the use tax and figuring out how it would work. But somehow, even though we talked about that in a public meeting, none of that seemed to permeate the internet or Slack channels or things like that. So if we can set the tone in this conversation to make it clear what things people are hoping to have information on and hoping to work through. And I heard loud and clear, people don't want to talk about the details, and we can understand all the things people are going through and how hard that is. But we just need to talk about the details and what additional details we need to be able to figure out the program. And it's not to say that I didn't hear you say you don't want to know the details. We just need to work that out so you don't have to. So if there are detailed conversations or questions back and forth of like, well, how would you do this? How would you fund that? From which fund would it come? Would it be a rebate or grant? It's not to say we didn't hear. It's that we need to work out the technical details so the program is something that we can administer and is allowed and those types of things. So if council could think through those kinds of frames of reference when we talk about the use tax piece, that would be great just so that we can try to make a message that we're conveying, even though we won't decide on any final program tonight, just to help convey more clearly to the community where we are on that. And then on the other topics, if there's additional information we need or things that we need to bring forward, if we can identify those clearly so the different staff members can help us with those in the different meetings they attend, that would be great. And so I'll open up for council discussion and comment on these topics. Councilmember Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate it. And first of all, I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight and for sharing your thoughts on this very difficult and incredibly important issue. You know, I don't really have words at this point to express kind of how I feel about the way, what you're going through right now. And so I just want to acknowledge the sadness and the trauma and the anger that I heard from each and every one of you tonight. And, you know, I want to, and so just from an emotional perspective, just sort of acknowledge that. I want to start my comments with sort of where, what I think the goal of our discussion is. And I think the overall sort of policy goal ought to be to try to get as many folks back to their home as quickly as possible. How do we do that? You know, what the community, what you all have identified is that there are two things standing in your way, the way I understand it. One is you're under insurance, because we have a state law that says that, you know, insurance companies have to pay your use taxes and your permit fees. But if you're underinsured, that doesn't really matter much, does it? So the next barrier is your, the use tax, right? This use tax, and it's, it as a barrier for you to rebuild. So I think that what we need to do as a council is to think about, how do we deal, how do we get people back to their homes in a way that eliminates... Or how do we eliminate the barriers to getting people back to their homes, and this use tax being one of them? So, you know, I have heard a lot from our staff about the need for a rebate versus some other mechanism. I'm certainly open to those ideas. I've heard a lot from our staff about the challenges of our upcoming budget and the budget situation completely sort of being flipped on its head. And so I think it's important for us to try to accurately represent what the costs to the city will be before, and what our reserves are in order to understand what the total cost will be. But to really put, you know, put together a program that will rebate the use taxes and then find the funding from the appropriate sources to do that. So I think if we start from basic principles of getting people back to their home and eliminating the barriers to that, and then moving in a direction of where, you know, rebating the funds and then finding the appropriate sources, I think that can be, that would be my suggestion for the way to move forward.
Mayor Prota Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank all the staff and the other agencies who came and spoke with us today. I think we got a lot of good information. I'm really thrilled to hear about some of the things like, you know, we're on the target of debris removal being August 1st, and we're down to just a couple trying to, you know, reconcile what people are doing and how to go through that. I think that's really terrific, and so I appreciate the report on that. Regarding the rebuilding updates, you know, I took pages of notes as I was hearing people testify, and a lot of people acknowledged the great work that the staff is doing. And so I very much appreciate that because I have very same perspective. And, you know, one of the things that we said in January when this all happened is we wanted to create processes and get enough resources that we can support everybody rebuilding. And like Councilman Brown, we want everybody to come home. There are some challenges under insurance. I'm at loss for how the city bridges that, because that's not something we really have a great effect on. But we're talking about fees and taxes and so forth. That is something we can address. As the Chair of the Council's Finance Committee, we met yesterday. We started talking about what are some options around that. So this is part of our dialogue. And, you know, this dialogue needs to be in the context of the overall budget. And I know some people quoted some things about what was our reserve coming into 2021. There needs to be more context on that, and we need to do a better job of explaining that because there were projects, and there were commitments on those funds that, you know, encumbered some of that. But with regard to the idea of use tax, yeah, use tax is something that has been in place for decades in the city of Louisville. It's been voted on and calculated in a little bit different ways. But what we currently have is a use tax that's restricted. And the only way that can change is a vote of the citizens. As Councilman Brown was acknowledging, we need to calculate, if we were to do any kind of rebate, what that is and understand what the sources are. And I think that's our responsibility as we go through the budget process to better understand that, understand what the mechanisms are of what we can do. Because we can't just forgive it. We can't legislate forgiveness of taxes. But we can potentially do a rebate. We will work with our attorney to better understand that. And as University Provost Russ Moore mentioned, sometimes you have to take risks and you have to do things a little bit out of the ordinary to programmatically help everybody get back, you know, on their feet. You know, the one thing that strikes me about the topic when we were talking about, you know, sources of funds or new sources, resources, it strikes me that those, the way and the questions that I was asking, those are all means-tested based upon income. And I think that we are looking at very few people, there will be some, very few people in Louisville who would actually qualify for those, whether it's a state program. We didn't really talk about the Community Foundation, but they're looking at income means-testing as well. For the $20 million they have, they have $30 million, but there's 20 million when they're talking about distributing. I don't know how they distribute that to 1,000 homes means-tested when you only have something like 6% that actually fall below the HUD AMI for that means-testing. So I think there's a lot of challenges there, and we're not going to solve all of those tonight. Some of those are out of our hands. But what I'm acknowledging is, based upon the direction of the Dole Program, the Community Foundation, I don't think a lot of it's going to benefit the citizens of Louisville who either have, you know, lost their homes or damaged homes. So, you know, we as a council need to find a way to acknowledge that and see what we can do with the resources that we have. But it's, tonight, I'm not willing to make a commitment exactly what that is until we go through the budget cycle and actually understand what resources we do have, and then define a program for there. But I think we need to do that very quickly.
Councilmember, sorry about that, Mayor Prota Maloney.
I'm done, Mayor. Thank you.
I apologize. I did not mean to cut you off. I thought you were finished. So if you are not, please finish.
Well, I guess the last thing I was going to say, just a few people commented on the one-year anniversary plans. And, you know, I guess I'd like to hear more what people's thoughts are because we want to be respectful. We want to do something that's meaningful. And that's the, that is our intention. So, thank you very much, Mayor. I probably went a little long there for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate not going first. It's allowed me to collect my thoughts a little bit. You know, sometimes you listen to respond, and then there are the times you listen to hear. And I found myself in a listening to hear and having no idea what to say after you guys were done with your comments. So again, I appreciate a little bit of time to collect my thoughts. When I train my employees on conflict resolution, there's this like joke. It's called the ketchup bottle explanation, because we're always like at a restaurant. I grab a couple ketchup bottles and mustard bottle and like try to make it visual. And I don't have that in front of me now, so I'll do the best I can. But one of the things we talk about is what I feel like right now is that there is, and it's physically so apparent right now, that there's the community, and then there's this issue, let's call it today, use taxes. A couple months ago, it was building codes. And it will be another thing in a couple months. I'm aware of that. And then there's us on the other side of that issue. And here we are battling over this ketchup bottle in the middle. And what I try to train my employees to do is, how do you get over there so that you're sitting together and looking at this problem together and not against each other at that problem? And it's, I think when you can get that physical piece of like, almost literally sitting next to each other, literally having your arm around someone and looking at that problem together, then you're working on how to solve that together instead of it being adversarial. And I think, I can't convince you of this, but I think there's this setup where there's this adversary relationship that doesn't exist, at least to the extent that maybe you think it does. And that's just my opinion. It's not fact. But I want you to know how much we are trying to sit next to you and solve some of these problems. The use tax exists as a thing. It isn't something we just implemented during this crisis, right? It exists, and we understand it's problematic. And it is kind of designed sort of like an impact fee, like, hey, you want to build a house in Louisville? We already have a library. We already have all these things. We already have a rec center. You owe us some money to build here because we already have all these things. You know, we already live here. We shouldn't have to pay that again. This isn't an impact fee, but it feels that way, right? And so we get that, or at least, you know, I try really hard not to speak for people, and it's hard when I'm saying something nice to not, I don't know. I think we all feel the same way, that we're not trying to have obstacles for you. We're not trying to have a really wonderful energy code be an obstacle for you. That's something we were all really excited about pre-December 30th. And these use taxes, I think we understand, someone's building a new building. We want them to pay their sales tax on their materials, and we want that to go to our community. But it's not really meant for this. But we're not saying, yes, it is meant for this. We're saying, yeah, no, we get it. We're saying, yeah, no, we get it. So we got to figure out how we solve this. And I think where I want to apologize is how much time it's taking, right? And that's really hard. So if this had somehow been resolved three months ago, we wouldn't be having this conversation. We'd be having a different conversation right now. But so, you know, with that premise, I just, you know. I think we do really profoundly just remembering that we're all part of the same community. That every single one of us lives here. My childhood home on Muirfield Court was burned to the ground. And we're trying to find a solution. And the meeting on Thursday, I think, will be really wonderful. And I think that what we're trying to do is figure out, yes, how do, how do we share the burden? And I would love to press that easy button and say, hey, we had a fire. The most destructive fire in the history of our state, country, town, for sure. How do we each pitch in the exact same amount of money or as a community? How do we all do that? Because I didn't lose my home and I'm happy to share the burden with you. But what's the vehicle to do that? So donate to community foundation and then it's tied up there. Donate to something else and then it's another issue. But like, how do we share the burden? And that's complicated. We can't just do that. That would have to go to the voters. And then like someone said, are we just shirking our responsibilities and putting something to the voters? And then we find out six months from now, they say no. Like, oh, sorry, we thought we'd all share the burden, one community. So that's problematic. Rebates are problematic because they come later, right? And so I think we're trying to figure it out. But I really want you to know that you have, like you've all mentioned, a wonderful staff. And really committed council members that do care about you because we're your neighbors and we're one of you. We're not on the opposite side of the room spiritually. I want to make sure that my position is clear that I, I think I'd mostly echo Councilmember Brown. That we want to figure out, we do not need extra money because of what happened. That isn't the point. But just like you, we have costs as a city that we don't understand. We don't know what our insurance company is going to give us. We don't know what grants we're going to get. We don't know how we're going to end. And we have to have enough money to pay the bills to run your city. And so it's complicated and we're trying to figure that out together. But I would love to take that risk and say, okay, well, what can we do very quickly to have a serious impact? And if that creates a problem, well, we need to solve it as a community, as one community. We need to solve the problem that we just created. But we don't want to create a really big problem that's going to be really hard to solve. So we need to be thoughtful about how we do it. But giving as much of a rebate back as quickly as possible is a priority for me. And solving it as one community as thoughtfully as possible is important to me. And I'm excited for more, more conversations on Thursday in the complexities that the mayor is speaking to. And that's our job and that staff's job is to figure out the complexity of it. And get it to a point where you just get your money and get your building. And I think you, you did it in two minutes and I'm doing it in 10. But we want you to rebuild your home and we want you to stay in our community. That's what we want. There's nothing else. That's what we want and we're going to work with you to make that happen.
So I don't see any other hands at this time, so I'll add my comments. Councilmember Most.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question of our city attorney who, for the first half of the meeting, I didn't know she was there because I couldn't see her. Because, you know, I just want it for my own edification and for everybody here to, hopefully you can answer this question. About the taxes, right? Because my understanding in the state of Colorado, obviously you can't incur a tax without a vote. Because of our Tabor rules, right? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so can you change tax law without a vote?
Well, the Tabor issues can be complicated. Yeah, in this case, though, we have not just the amount of the tax. But the obligation to put the revenues from that tax into particular funds. And that was all approved by the voters as well. So that's part of the tax that was approved. So the city council can't change where that revenue goes without further voter approval.
Could we just end the tax without further, excuse me, further voter approval?
You know, that's something that I would want to really give some consideration to. Whether that is possible and how the council would do that.
Okay, because I'm just trying to understand what our options are. Did you want to weigh in, Mayor?
I'll wait till I can.
Okay, all right. So, and so, okay, so that's a question mark about, okay.
Sure. And that's something that I'm happy to follow up.
Great. That would be, that would, I think, be really, really helpful. And then if we're going to incur any new revenues, we would, in the form of taxes, that would have to go to the voters as well.
When you say new revenues.
Whether it's if we're changing sales tax or we're adding property taxes. Or I don't know what, you know, wherever else we're getting tax revenue from, which I'm going to learn more about, obviously, on Thursday. But I'm just trying to understand what the, you know, maybe it's too hard a question to ask simply. What the restrictions are in terms of what we can or cannot do without voter approval.
Right. Any new tax requires voter approval. You have an existing tax that can, if the tax base expands, will generate more revenues. That doesn't require voter approval.
But changing the rate of the tax.
Correct. Yeah, or any tax policy change that results in a net revenue increase would require approval of the voters as well. That's why I say it's complicated.
Yeah, I know. All right. Thank you.
Thanks. And to all of the people who are survivors, who are attending either in person or virtually. I don't think we can say thanks enough for taking the time to attend to this. And to hear thoughts, to present your stories. And I want you to know that we, we are listening. And the proof of that, I think, will be, I hope, in the decisions that we make shortly. I really appreciate the positive comments that you've made about staff. They work really hard. We know they are a treasure. I'm glad that you know that, too. What I heard tonight was heartbreaking. You all are a part of us. What I heard was uncertainty. Confusion about what's available. Just the staggering loss that you've suffered and continue to suffer over and over and over again. The distance between where you were seven months ago. And where you are right now, whether you're living in Lewisville or otherwise, you're not living in your house. that's heartbreaking, continues to be. And I think you, what I've also heard is, you know, you have skin in the game. You've had skin in the game the whole time. And I think at least what I've heard from some is, do we? Do we have the sense of shared obligation, shared sacrifice? You have been sacrificed enough. But do we have the sense that it's not just a matter of saying you're part of us? But wanting, wanting to have you come home. I, the comment that really stayed with me maybe the most and haunts me is. And I, pardon me for not remembering the person's name who said it. But the idea of it almost feels like they want us to leave. And I, I, I can't argue with the feeling that is a horrible feeling to have. And I say, from my standpoint, I'm sorry if that's the way some of our discussions have gone. Our decision making has gone. Our, maybe empathy has not been there from, from time to time. We want you back. We do, because you're part of us. I think one thing that in all of this, that occurs to me is that we are we're grossly undervaluing, I think, what we as a community have lost. It's not something that's very tangible. The tangible, the numbers clearly speak for themselves and are horrific. But our community is torn. And there is a lot that we've lost already by not having you here. And we have a great public benefit, again, that we may not be valuing. Because we can't put a number on it. A great public benefit in getting you back. And so all of that is by way of saying that I think this is a problem. And particularly speaking to the use tax is, as Councilmember Brown said at the beginning. I think we've got a, a problem and an obstacle or set of obstacles. This is one obstacle to getting you back. And I think we can figure out a way to do it, whether we're going to be able to do it exactly the way everybody wants. I think is, is a question. I think what we owe you as a council is that we owe you transparency in what our numbers are. And helping you to understand what the budget looks like, where we have money, where we don't. I think we owe you some. I think we owe you the idea of choosing well. We've got a lot of choices to make. And for those of you, I hope and invite you to be part of this. You know, watching this on Thursdays, we have our budget retreat. That we're going to have to make some choices about what our priorities really are in the city. We always have to do that, but this is an especially difficult year. I don't personally think we ought to be sending issues to the voters. I don't think we should be hair splitting between different groups of fire survivors. I think, I think we need to find ways so that, we need to find ways of knitting back the community so that when we look back on this in 10 years, in 20 years. We can say that we worked very hard to bring as many back as we possibly could. Given the financial constraints that we had. And that we didn't let, we didn't let insignificant issues get in our way. And I think in the end, there probably are a lot of insignificant issues. But we've got to make decisions between what's more and less important on the budget. And I think that's what a lot of our discussion later this week is about. I think in terms, I think I already said my comments about the commemoration. I tend to agree with the person who said we ought not to put too much city resource into that. In the sense of, I think we need a shared, you know, the community can be very much a part of that. I don't, I don't want to, you know, spend inordinate amounts of time and money. If that's going to be perceived as disrespectful. And trying to think what some of the other issues that we have to look at are. But I think, you know, we can't reach a decision tonight. All I can tell you is that we're with you. And that you need to keep our feet to the fire. Because we want to represent you. And I, that's why we're here, all of us. And we don't always do the best job at what we do. I make mistakes all the time and I suspect my fellow council members would agree that they probably do too. But we want you back. We value you. And we're going to make, we're going to make it through this by finding a solution to the problem that, of the use tax burden that we're facing, that you're facing. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember Lee. So I think we need to actually flesh out some more things tonight. So we can have a more productive discussion and give staff some direction on what types of things to bring forward. So like, we don't have to figure out everything. But I do think it's, the more we can flesh out and give certain direction on different topics, the better our next discussion will be. The more information we'll have at the budget retreat so we can move it forward faster. So I think we need to get into a little, a few more details than folks have so far. And, you know, I apologize if there's any brevity in my comments. It's 9:45 and I'm just trying to move the discussion forward because there's a huge amount of urgency with this topic. So I hope it doesn't come across wrong. So I think the issue, if you go back and watch the Superior Discussion on it and their attorney's advice. And the conversations around it is like, there are a few problems that created, are created with a waiver that are not created with a rebate. And so I think everybody would rather just have a waiver than a rebate. But I think it creates several problems with insurance builders, applicability of taxes, some potential legal issues. And so by doing a grant program that's a rebate, I think we can avoid a number of those issues. So I'm in favor of doing a grant program that's a rebate over a waiver. Are people on that track right now generally? That that's the kind of program we want to see staff bring back? And that doesn't mean we're deciding that tonight. It's just the type of program we'll bring back. It looked like there were a number of thumbs up. So we can still be critical of the program. We can still get more public input on the program and have other feedback. But I think if we can hone in on that, that helps give direction to the type of thing we would see. I have, I'm, so one of the challenges that I have struggled with in this whole process is that we have a number of partners that we need to continue to work with throughout this entire process. So other governmental agencies and other nonprofit agencies that we need to continue to have good partnerships with. And try to maximize our benefit as a community. That's frankly what we're trying to do, to try to help people get back home, just like Councilmember Brown laid out. That doesn't mean there haven't been really hard conversations with individual other agencies that don't necessarily do things that the community is asking for. But we, you still can't pub, there's a problem with, you know. There's just a really hard conflict with how we talk about these different issues. And so I'm going to try to as sensitively as possible, talk about the next issue. And hopefully not get too much into the details. But I have concern about if we do a grant program, having the grant program flow through the navigators. Which creates another issue for our internal staff. Because we don't really have the type of staff. I'm not saying anything negative about staff. We don't have the expertise and staff to administer a grant program if we get into a lot of specific details and programmatic aspects. So if we start asking about insurance levels or things like that, like we don't have that expertise in our staff. So I would like to hear some comments from other council members about the, how, what, what type of program we would like staff to bring back from an administrative standpoint. On one hand, I completely understand it would be really nice to have the recovery navigators administer the program because that's a one stop shop. But I just am very concerned about some of past, the past experiences we've had to this point. So I just, I'm very torn there. past, the past experiences we've had to this point. So I just, I'm very torn there because we don't have the staff internally to run a grant program. But I'm not comfortable taking money from the general fund and giving it to a third party that hasn't performed in a way that I think meets our community's expectations. So if we can focus on that one topic, I still have other ones after this. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my preference would be a very, a, a simple administrative process. I didn't, I did not want to add additional hoops and burdens. I think we've identified that this is a problem really that's caused by the under insurance program, program. And so the way that our opt out works for the energy code right now is essentially a, a self certification. It's a box that people check. I think something very similar to that would be appropriate, that when you fill your, fill in your building permit or you, you reply for your building permit and you, you know, you're paying your use taxes that will then be rebated later. You check a box and then that, that somehow signs you up automatically for a, for a rebate of some sort. That, the, the exact logistics could be worked out, but I think the simplicity and the sort of streamlined and sort of single application with the permitting is, I think, an, an important part of that process.
Can you just, and I apologize, I know we don't really do back and forth, but can you just clarify? So what are you having people attest to in what you just laid out? And then are you suggesting this, then we would write that the, the staff would administer the grant program?
Just that they're underinsured. Yeah. And that the staff would then be able to say, okay, this person has attested to being underinsured. Therefore, they get their, they get their rebate essentially.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Yeah, and I, I echo the simplicity and I appreciate you kind of focusing our energy on some concrete things. I think whether it's a, a percent rebate of a part of the use tax, or if it's, you know, an easily, you know, an easy number when someone comes in for a permit and says, hey, the building's going to be eight hundred thousand dollars. Like I'm, I'm applying for my permit. The construction cost is going to be eight hundred thousand. That there's a one percent rebate or a two percent rebate, which equals roughly half or all of a, you know, something very simple. Again, where we have to do the complicated math to figure out what that number would be so that we're not bankrupting ourselves, but that the process is simple. And I do, I, I do think it's worth the conversation as to whether this is across the board or whether this is some sort of means based thing. And by means based, I mean, I'm underinsured or I make a certain income. If we want to do those things or not. I think I would err on simplicity, but I definitely understand the desire to only rebate people who actually aren't having insurance. It seems a little silly to, my insurance company is going to cover this and I'd also like it back. It doesn't really make sense, right? I mean, it's, it's one of those things that, well, then you'd probably have to give that back to your insurance company because they shouldn't be paying for something you don't have to pay. It's complicated, right? So it does seem to be like I check a box saying I'm underinsured and now that issue's gone. And then can we make it as simple as we can after that and find a, a number, a, a strategy so that it's equitable across the board, but it doesn't bankrupt us on the other end? And some portion of what will be hopefully, you know, what we'll be receiving, we're giving back. It's not coming, you know, from our reserve, but it's coming from the income we're receiving. So.
Mayor Protam Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate comments from my colleagues. You know, one of the things I heard, and I took lots of notes tonight is people really don't want a means tested process. And I understand that. And, and, you know, as you mentioned, Mayor, we have you know, partners out there, whether it's DOLA or the Community Foundation, and, and they're going through a navigator process really to do means testing. I don't believe that the majority of people in Los, we're trying to help ensure they're able to rebuild their homes are going to qualify under either one of those programs in a very significant way. So I don't think that's appropriate in our case. You know, and I also don't want staff going through a calculation of, you know, whether or not somebody has the insurance. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to go that far. What Council Brown suggested was really a binary. Either you declare or you don't declare. If you declare that you're underinsured, then we take, we do some calculation based upon that of a rebate of use taxes. And where those funds are going to have to come from is the general fund. You know, some people ask us to waive them or eliminate them. We really can't do that. And there's been some discussion with the attorney about that. So I'm looking for a very straightforward process and something that's fairly simple, but it would have to be a rebate in my opinion. Thank you.
Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, I, I agree with the Mayor Protam that we, we've done grant programs recently. And you know, you've had all these experiences that aren't really ones you really want to have to go through, but we have, have provided grants in different, you know, during the pandemic and, and other ways. And we can, the, the simpler, the better. I don't think we should, I, I think the people don't want means tested grant here. And I think there is enough of a public benefit, as I mentioned in my earlier comments, that I'm not particularly worried about that piece in any event. But I, I think the, the easier we can make this on staff, the better. I appreciate Mayor that you're raising this because I think it, how we we, we don't want to get, we don't want this part to get lost in somebody else's complexity. There's plenty of complexity as the, the fire victims have eloquently spoken to tonight, the more, the, the simpler we can do it, the better. And we are going to have to make some hard choices. I think that's what the Mayor Protam is just saying. And that's, that's for us. That's what we, what we got elected to do. So simplicity, I think we're going to have to figure out where it, what exactly the numbers are going to be, but it just shouldn't, it shouldn't be that hard to, it shouldn't be that hard to be able to, to take advantage of this. We just need to be, make it simple.
I do appreciate folks are focusing on how to streamline it as much as possible, but I don't want to undervalue. Like, so just take, for example, when we did a grant program for businesses during COVID-19, like there was a tremendous amount of staff work involved with issuing checks to businesses. Like it took a tremendous amount of time. Just issuing five hundred and fifty checks is a tremendous amount of staff effort. I know it sounds really straightforward and easy, but, and it doesn't mean it's not worthwhile and we should absolutely do it. But I just don't want to undercut staff by saying it should be really easy because I think it will take a tremendous staff effort. And that's worthwhile and we ought to do that. But it, it is a lot of work, even if we make it really easy. And we need to make it as easy as possible so that it's feasible at all.
Yeah, I mean, Mayor, I, I don't mean to suggest to the contrary. I, I'm, I'm not suggesting it's not going to be a lot of work. I think I'm comparing it to the idea of making staff go through a very complicated procedure on top of doing the regular administration of an otherwise quote, simple program.
Okay, Councilmember Most.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with the mayor. I'm concerned that no matter how we do this, there's going to be a level of complexity and we need to understand that. And just how complex that is, it's a decision that we have to think about. One, one area that I'm a little bit concerned about in terms of a checkbox is while there certainly are many, many people in our community that are truly underinsured and truly under financial stress. And we heard some of those stories this evening, which is, you know, obviously difficult and hard to hear. And I, I do know that there are some people who are increasing the size of their houses. They are fully insured and they do have financial resources. And they're making choices to build back bigger. And I'm not talking about the, the 10% variance. And I do have a concern because we are talking about the, you know, public money. People are choosing to build considerably larger houses than, than, than they already had. To me, that's an addition or a, you know, a choice. And I, and I don't know how to deal with that, but I, I am a little bit concerned because anybody who was building a house bigger than the house they have, anybody who was adding on to their current home would be paying use taxes on that amount. So, and I get, I understand that adds complexity and I completely understand. You know, having to go through, jump through hoops to get financial aid of different kinds. I've had to do that many times myself. It's not a pleasant experience. And obviously, these folks have done this multiple times and often with no results, which is really painful. But I am a little bit concerned about that piece of it. And I don't know how we, how we would look at that as well.
Thank you. And so it sounded, I, I don't want to put words into other people's mouths, but I'm trying to just summarize so staff knows what to bring back. So it sounded like generally, if there's an attestation to under insurance, just a simple checkbox, that that's what people are sort of looking for in a first draft of a program to consider at a future date. I think for, so most of these things will not be ready for Thursday because we'll have to figure all this out. But I would wonder if we could have an estimate of the impact to the general fund for our discussion on Thursday of the what, what the impact to the general fund portion is, if we do the use tax grant program out of the general fund. And then I would like to challenge council members to come ready to identify general fund programs that will impact that to make up for that offset. So it's, you, you can't identify something in a different fund. You have to pick the fund that we need to find the money in. So if council members can please look through their comprehensive annual financial reports to understand the current fund balances and really come ready to talk about that hard conversation. And what potential things to delay or move, that would be helpful. And City, City Manager Davis, do you think it's reasonable to be able to have just an order of magnitude value in there that we could try some different scenarios with at the budget retreat?
Yeah, I think we can have some of that analysis available, some estimates for you. And yeah, I appreciate you recognizing the limitations on having anything, having any additional information about sort of a, you know, what the program would look like, but this is good direction on where you want to go. So we can start to do just kind of some research and start to identify some of those areas that might cause, you know, administrative complexities or, or challenges in interface with other programs. So we'll start to take a look at that.
And then another area that I don't think we've fully covered, but I think is important. Because for us, you know, we're geeking out in all of the details of all of this. So the difference between the historic preservation, construction use tax and the recreation historic, or, you know, all of these different taxes mean something different to each one of us. And, and we've thought about, you know, when people pass them and what the funds are for. But when somebody's paying their permit fee, like we've even heard it in the language and the letters we've gotten, it's just all one thing. So I think we need to talk about, I think we need to put more information out about our building permit fee direction that we've already given as a council to make it clear that the, we have given direction that we want the building fee program to cover the cost of building inspection and plan review. And that if there are savings, because so many people are going through this at the same time, we, we hope there are savings. Like that could be a silver lining in a terrible situation, that we will rebate those savings. So we're keeping track of our costs and we're keeping track of who's paid those building permit fees. So, you know, even the people that have already come in, if they've paid a permit fee and we come in and we have savings, that we can rebate that. So to, to me, the building permit fee is entirely different than the use tax, but I understand when someone comes in and pays, it's just a cost. But I think we need to put more information out around that. Is council on the same track with that? Mayor Protam Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. What I wanted to comment on, you, you were talking about, we need to come prepared because, I mean, we're going to have to come prepared to find any amount of money. You know, some of that is taking a look at programs. I think it's some of it also needs to be in the context of transfers that we're doing from the general fund to other funds.
Yep.
And I think that's a significant one, both for the capital, open space and, and rec center. So I, I think that everything needs to be, all rocks should be potentially overturned in this discussion.
I already have my fund transfer spreadsheet ready.
Me too. Thank you.
Can't wait to see yours. So just back to the question on the building permit fee communication, are people on the same page that I am or do we want to go a different direction than that? I see a lot of head nodding and thumbs up. So I think if we can communicate that program, that would be awesome. And then I think there's another lingering issue that people, when somebody pays their fees, again, it's like, it doesn't, it, it, no one is really worried about which jurisdiction that it's going to. It's just a check that you're issuing. So I think that, you know, even if we do all of the things we've talked about, there's still the county use tax that we have to collect when we do the building permit. So if we have, when we have this discussion again, if we could have the IGA around that in the packet, so we can all better understand our obligation to collect that tax on their behalf. Are there any other things people need when this comes back for a discussion as a program? Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Mayor. I just want to make sure that we've had a number of assumptions built into our budget related to some of the costs associated with the, the fire and also with sort of the frequency of rebuilds over a given period of time. And I think that it's important for us that those, my sense is that the estimates, either on the costs or the revenue side, are extremely sensitive to those assumptions. So whether you choose 60%, people rebuild in three years, or 80% or 40% has a huge impact on whether or not, you know, how much money we might be rebating. So I would like to have some sense of what the, what the sensitivity is related to various assumptions, specifically to the frequency of rebuilds over a given period of time. And then the PPDR cost, to the extent to which that aspect impacts this, this overall cost. And then, and then some of the other infrastructure costs that we, that we anticipate. So I think it's important for us to know sort of, and pick an appropriate set of assumptions that we can all agree on.
I think that'll be a really good discussion. I think part of the problem is the same thing that's been identified from many people is that we, we won't know. And so we'll have to agree what's a fair amount of risk to assume on those calculations. Cause we won't, we won't know until we are, have the bill and then it's too late. So we'll have to agree.
I agree with you, Mayor. And I, I, not to belabor the point, but I think it's important that we all kind of agree on what the, the relative risk is.
Right. Perfect. That sounds great. Are there other things for Thursday that would help facilitate the discussion? Recognizing the packets already posted and, you know, we can't ask for the moon on Thursday, but if there are some scenarios, Councilmember Dickinson.
I'll probably just have some questions on like the overall, and I know it's in the pack at the back, but just overall, what we collect in property taxes every year from residential, commercial, I know some that's in there. But kind of like what we're expecting and how the changes of the county, changing the assessment rate and going back up. And I'll just probably, it's not new information, just like a ready, ready to answer questions about the overall property tax for residential, commercial. If we're going to do anything with that and understanding what our future revenues might be after rebuild.
Okay, I just want to look at my notes really quick to make sure I went through every one of these points. Okay, that looks great. Any other, any other comments from people on any of these topics? PPDR, rebuilding, use tax, new resources, commemoration. Councilmember Most.
Um, just on the commemoration, I want to reiterate what fellow council members said tonight. It's really, and I mentioned this early, it's really important that whatever we do is sanctioned by the folks that were impacted from this. And so I just think we need to take, you know, take direction. And there may be differences within the community or whatever, but I just want to reiterate, I think it's really important. And the second thing is that, just getting back to Councilmember Brown's point about what, what, what problem we're trying to solve here, which is, you know, basically a problem of underinsurance for people. And so if we're talking about self attestation to that underinsurance, then, and I don't know whether or not, maybe our city attorney can weigh in. I mean, I would like to, there to be some weight around that self attestation. I think that it's reasonable for us to say that if you're going to claim that you're underinsured and we're not going to check that you're underinsured, that there should be some legal weight behind that, that, that you are that you are accountable for being honest and truthful. Because we are talking about taking, you know, our community funds and directly reimbursing people. And I think it's really important that if that's the problem that we're, we're trying to solve, and we're, we're going to not put people through means testing and all this other horrible thing, that we should be addressing that problem, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? I would just echo on the commemoration. I think it was, I think there was a comment that we should change that language. I think that was good. That we should probably open up a portal, you know, so we can get a lot of feedback. And then I would just say that anything we do will be, have mixed response. And there have been families, survivors that have asked for, you know, memorials. And I've gotten really great submissions for different community art from people that are survivors, but other people that have said you have to, like, that are not happy with it. So I just don't think we should go into it thinking that everyone is going to sanction anything, but that we should have a really open process where people can provide their input. And we try to be inclusive about whatever programming that we do or whatever artwork that we commemorate, or however we memorialize it. And just really make sure we take in the input, give people the opportunity to give as much feedback as they can, so we come up with something good. And on the lines of commemoration, the post office commemorated the flag they were flying on December 30th at the post office today. And it's, you know, there to symbolize the resilience of our community. And I thought that was really special, the way they did it, because it is tattered, and it is, it really blew around in the wind. So it's got all these knots tied in it, and it's worn. But it's got this big plaque above it to just commemorate how resilient the community is. And I just, it felt very special to me personally. So I hope other people are able to see that at the post office and can relate to it in some positive way. Anything else on this topic tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll continue this discussion forward at future meetings. And I want to thank everybody for their feedback. And that takes us to our second agenda item tonight, which is ordinance number 1837, series 2022, and ordinance amending title 15, 16, and 17 of the Louisville Municipal Code Concerning Mailed Notices of Public Hearings and Certain Land Use Applications Under Review. This is our second hearing and public, second reading and public hearing. And so I'll open the hearing only to request that we will continue it to 8/16/2022. So I move that we would continue this presentation to the 16th of August, 2022. I guess I'll just ask Planner Ritchie, will this create notice problems for any of the families?
No, because it's not in effect yet. It hasn't gone in, so no.
Great. So there's a second from Councilmember Lay.
Mayor, if you can add the time.
At 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Or after. Is the second or accept my friendly amendment?
I accept your friendly amendment.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Fahey, I should have had someone go get you. Thank you for knowing to come back. Very good. And Councilmember Fahey was here for the continuance of the ordinance. Thank you very much. That takes us to our city attorney's report.
I have no report this evening.
That takes us to council comments, committee reports, and identification of future agenda items. Any council, Councilmember Dickinson?
Just letting you guys know about two really great events this week. Thursday night, Crystal Springs is doing the release of their Phoenix Rising Beer, which is a beer that a bunch of people collaborated on to raise money for fire victims. And so that's kind of a fun celebration Thursday night. And then on Saturday afternoon at Lucky Pie is the unveiling of the mural that has been under work for a long time. So it'll be a fun celebration that you guys can all join. Dancing is required. There'll be a DJ, the mayor will be dancing. But, yeah, it's on the back of the Lucky Pie building, but the party will be there at Lucky Pie. And a really, really wonderful mural that's been created by the children of our community through the Global Citizens Geography Club and a wonderful muralist, Adri Norris. So those two celebrations of this week, which are really exciting.
All right, I will try to be brief. I have one thing that is time sensitive and one thing that's not, but I'm going to say it anyway. So the not one is the library is collaborating with Boulder County Public Health on Sugar Free September. And it's a program to really raise awareness of sugary products that are in like kids' meals and all of these things. And, and like the Kit Kat bars that we eat while we're at council, and, you know, all the sugar that we're consuming. So it's a public awareness and informational campaign that they're doing. And the month is being proclaimed in many areas as Sugar Free September. And so there's a question if our council would be interested in participating in the proclamation. So just looking to see if there is the majority support to put that proclamation on a future agenda.
My birthday is in September, which makes it difficult.
Say it in the microphone. Maxine's birthday is in September, is what she said. So that makes Sugar Free September just that much harder for her. I don't know that it means giving up your birthday cake. I think it's around awareness.
If I can have my birthday cake, then that's okay.
I don't think it's like an abstinence. I think it's really around awareness. So we'll, we'll work on the proclamation and bring that back. It looked like there was support. And the other topic is a little esoteric, and I'll try my best to make it as accessible as possible. So the Federal Transit Authority administers funds to urbanized areas. And in large urbanized areas, like the Denver-Aurora urbanized area, the funds go directly to the transit agency that's receiving those funds, direct allocation. In small urbanized areas like Louisville and Lafayette and Erie that are designated census places that are small urbanized areas, the money is allocated actually to the governor's office, and the governor can choose where to allocate it. And historically, in our area, the money has been allocated to our transit agency because it's transit authority funding. And, but, there's no reason why that's required by law. The governor can allocate it to any agency that's a recipient, that can receive federal transit authority funds. And so in the past, for example, Grand Junction was a small urbanized area, but they didn't have a transit agency, so they had no way to expend the funds. So the governor at that time, this was back in the 80s or 90s, said, "We'll allocate those funds to the Denver metro region," even though they were urbanized area funds that were associated with Grand Junction. They went to Denver metro because there was no way to expend the funds in Grand Junction. So this has been done before. And now we're here again on another example of it, but it's a little different this time. So last fall, the state CDOT director asked that the small urbanized area funds for our area and for Longmont and for Boulder be allocated to Boulder County instead of being allocated to the regional transportation district. And this created some level of conflict between RTD board members, some, others not so much, but some board members, and the county. And it has caused some ongoing regional conflict about how these funds are received and allocated because there are a lot of differences in perception about what's equitable and what's not. And interestingly, the funds have to be used on transit. So the county's position is that they will give the money back to RTD to use on transit. But RTD's problem with it has, as they have articulated it, is that they have to do a Title VI plan that shows that there's equitable distribution of the transit fundings, that we're making sure we serve underserved populations in the region, and that we make sure that there are all kinds of things that we really support as a community. And they have a driver shortage. And so they didn't feel like they could provide the programming that the state and county wanted under their Title VI plan and with their driver shortage. And so they said, "We can't do the things that they were being told they had to promise to, to get these funds that are ARPA dollars associated with this FTA allocation." So RTD said, "If you're making us agree to those things, we can't legally do it. So give it to the county." So now here we are, October, November, all of these meetings have happened, meetings, meetings, meetings. And here we are, and there's going to be a TIP application in front of Dr. Cog this week around this topic, to modify the funds from going to RTD to the county. TIP is our Transportation Improvement Program, sorry about that. And so we'll have to modify, anytime there's a transportation.
We're with you, Mayor. We're with you. We're following you.
Anytime there's a transportation program of a certain size, you have to modify our transportation plan. You can't do something without modifying the plan. It has to be in the plan to do it. So it's coming to Dr. Cog to talk about, and I am planning on removing it from consent agenda to talk about it because there are a number of conflicts that I think we need to understand before we vote on it. Like, there are equity considerations. There are, I think there are pretty reasonable concerns to bring up about whether the county can provide these transit services, since they're not a transit agency, and whether they can actually even receive the FTA funds. So I have a list of questions I've provided, and just to understand these questions better before we would vote in support of it. And then just the last piece is, it was reflected in the packet that we did support it. And I think it's important that we clarify that we've had nothing to do with this. Because as part of the region, I don't think it serves us or anyone in our region to say that we've done this, because there's, this has created quite a lot of conflict on a regional level. So I think it is, at minimum, important to clarify that even though the packet says we supported this, we have not supported this. So there'll.
Dr. Cog packet?
It's in the Dr. Cog packet, yeah. So there'll be a discussion about this topic tomorrow. I'll provide you guys an update with how it goes. The types of things I'm asking about are how the transit will be. And let me just add one more piece that I've left out that's pretty critical. So originally, the whole conflict was around FF2, FF4, and LX service restoration, which are really critical routes to our region. And all along the way, I've asked the question, "How does doing this restore that service?" Because that's what we're, that's the goal we all have, everybody, RTD, the county, everybody actually agrees in that goal of restoring that service. But now we have the plan in front of us. The money was taken away from RTD because they weren't restoring that service and given to the county to restore that service. And now we have the plan in front of us, and it doesn't restore any of those services. So I think we need to have a discussion about this at the Dr. Cog Board. I'm going to be bringing these points up, and I didn't want you all to find out about it in the news.
How much money are we talking about?
Thirty-two, thirty-four million, something like that. And, and part of why this is an important conversation also is because this is the money that's associated with ARPA. But there's a question about whether or not the county would pursue doing this on an ongoing basis for all of our urbanized area funding. So I think we need to have the conversation now so that people don't then feel undercut when that next step comes forward. So I just think clearing the air, opening these different points at the board, making sure we really understand, how does this actually help us restore service? And then what does it do to our relationship with some of the RTD directors that have raised some pretty fair points around the Title VI plan and other concerns? So it's complicated. I'll get the shirt. That's all I have on that topic. Any other topics? Councilmember Brown?
So this is just for our awareness at this point.
Yes.
But it might come back to us because.
And it's.
Okay, good.
Or if I can't go tomorrow, you're the Dr. Cog alternate.
I know, I know. I'm just making sure. Okay. But if we, I'm ready. If we need to do something, you'll let us know.
Yeah, I don't think there's, so we've never been asked to take any action, which is why I haven't ever brought this up to the group yet. Like, there's, but then in the packet, it appeared as supported by our city. So I actually don't know that we ever will have to take an action. But it does impact our relationship with a lot of other people in the region. So I just.
It's not insignificant, but yeah.
Yeah. Mayor Protem Maloney?
Well, I guess the question I have is, we're talking about a lot of money. So what are the restrictions on the use of those funds?
So the, this funding was for restoring service that was cut during the global pandemic. That's what this particular pool was for. But it's a, your question is actually, maybe you mean this question, and maybe you don't. But the funding, generally speaking, for our urbanized area, I don't know which camera's looking at me to look at you. The question generally for our urbanized area is a broader question. And those funds can be used for transit more generally, for the small urbanized area. But this money that we're talking about tomorrow is just the recovery money, COVID recovery money.
Right, so, I mean, my follow-up to that is, we have a transportation master plan where we've identified some significant needs. Can it apply to those things? Or is it just restoring certain bus lines or?
Federal transit funds is for transit, providing transit service. And so this would, and this particular funding is for restoring service that was cut during the pandemic.
Yeah, well, I think it's awkward that that's going to the county, and the service provider is RTD.
Yes. You can, I'm happy to talk to you. I can forward you all sorts of information if you would like more information.
I'm not sure I want to know more.
It is complicated too, because the county's trying really hard to provide service for the residents, right? Like, the county's trying to get our fair share as Boulder County of transit service. And then, so it's just complicated as to whether or not this is an effective approach.
But the FF1 and FF2 are very important, especially when we get beyond COVID, if that ever happens.
Yeah, the FF1 is running, the FF2 and 4, the express routes, that are the bread and butter of what, they used to be the HX and the BMX, that is what is currently cut. And it is a really big deal. So restoring that service is critical. This program that we're voting on tomorrow doesn't restore that service.
Can we, can the county take the money and then outsource it to RTD to run the service?
That's exactly what they're proposing. I think we have exhausted this, and now it's become a discussion item. So it's gone beyond an update. We can put this on an agenda if council wants to debate it further. But I'm happy to talk to anyone about it more offline. Any other committee reports or updates? All right, seeing none, thank you all for your participation. We are adjourned.